...with liberty and justice for all. Would you please all remain standing for a moment of silence to remember those who are fighting for our freedom, our troops across the nation and overseas, and those who have lost their lives in doing so? Thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda, we will be setting the dates for the May meeting. The workshop will be Wednesday, April 29th at 7:00 PM, and the board meeting will be Monday, May 4th at 7:30 PM. Before we begin the public hearing, I know a lot of you are here tonight in regards to the budget hearing. I'd like to just read a statement from myself with regards to the budget. "I would like to thank all of our residents who have come out tonight to discuss the budget for this coming year. As I am the chief financial officer of this village, I feel it is my duty to present a tentative budget that reflects an accurate accounting of the finances of the village. This budget was prepared using budget worksheets from all departments that accurately depicts the needs and expenses to continue to deliver all of the services to our village. It has also included a comprehensive overview by Michael Janito, the village's treasurer, as to the present state of finances. In order to achieve a clear picture of these finances, I felt that it was imperative to present a tentative budget that reflects our true state of affairs before any reductions as this gives not only the board but the residents a better understanding of the budget process. This has also been of great assistance to evaluating the method of budgeting, the needs of the village for both today and in years to come. There has not been a definitive plan to budget the ongoing infrastructural and maintenance of our village. This has led to years of cumulative neglect to our buildings, water and sewer systems, as well as annual increases to the general cost of living. Each year, we as residents see increases in a gallon of milk, a gallon of gas, and a loaf of bread. We pay these increases because these are our needs to which we must have. We consistently are making repairs on our homes and replacing and updating our homes as this is our investment and we continue to protect and maintain that investment. This is the same practice that we must have for our village as this is our home and we must all do our part to maintain it. We are a full-service village and this affords for many services to our village that we desire and that is why we live here. Our water rates are half of what the rest of the county is paying regardless of the increases included in this budget. The assurance that our police are at our door in seconds or minutes, which has made the difference between life and death in health emergencies. Our state accredited police department has kept our village ranked fifth safest jurisdiction in New York State, and today we were notified that we are in the top 100 safest jurisdictions in the country. Our fire department's response time is outstanding, which has saved many lives and homes. The price we pay for this service is immeasurable as to the sense of security that we have. Since taking office, I have been working with Charles Sawicki and Joe Hunt to put together a multi-year maintenance plan for the village. This will include ongoing building maintenance, vehicle maintenance, and replacement, as well as identifying future projects of the needs of the village. This plan will be a safety net to project and budget these needs as well as prevent future neglect of our village. It will also be a sounder budget tool to be used to minimize large tax increases. In 2010, the need for infrastructure repairs and upgrades were imperative in the wastewater treatment plant to both maintain the plant as well as restore its compliance. A conscious decision was made to invest in our infrastructure, however, it was a large expense. To date, we have invested over $4 million in our wastewater treatment plant. This investment will give us decades of compliance as well as bringing the plant to its most efficient and maintained state. While we are in a time where major expenses are being faced, we must all do our part in ensuring the future of our village. There has been far many two instances that an election of office has outweighed the due diligence of keeping our village financially sound, safe to live in, and affordable in the long term. Although this is my reelection year, I will not allow that to cloud my commitment to this village. I am here to bite the bullet for Suffolk and its residents to restore financial health and invest and protect our village for the years to come. This may come with tax increases that are not as low as we are accustomed to, however, those past low increases in our budgets are a serious contributing factor to our financial condition and neglect of our village that we are faced with today. I handpicked Michael Janito, who has extensive expertise in municipal financing. His years of successful financial planning for municipalities, I felt was imperative given the concern I had when beginning my term as mayor. Mike worked over nine months in sorting out the treasurer's office to restore it and bring order. The next step was to create a sound deficit plan going forward. Mike has created a sound deficit financing plan as well as a plan for a more accurate budgeting process. This coupled with a plan to maintain our village will bring financial stability to our village. I will propose the following to alleviate some of the increases to our residents this year as it is our most critical year, a year that we will start our recovery. I will not, however, propose means of consolidation of services that will eliminate or decrease the service that makes our village such a desirable, special place to live. And we've been working on this budget, I've been working with Mike Janito, and there are some things we can do to reduce the 22.8 percent increase. I want you to know that the reason that it came out at 22.8 percent is because that's a perfect world budget. But I truly understand that this is a number that scares people. But in order for the residents of this village to understand where this village is and where it's going and how it's going forward to recover, we need to all be on the same page. So we've, you know, we've looked at the budget and we've found some ways to bring down the budget, and tonight I will propose that we remove the replacement of a police car, we will forego replacement of two police officers, we will forego replacement of two DPW workers, we will forego an additional part-time clerk in the DPW, we will forego one dispatcher position, we will surplus village equipment. I had the DPW go through all of our equipment in the village that we are no longer in need of, which equates to about $116,000. I have implemented a state procurement policy for all purchases, including supplies, to reduce the purchasing expense by 33 percent. I will continue ongoing negotiations with the union for decreases and raises. I will continue the negotiations with United Water for the selling of our water. I have received word tonight that there has been some small progress in the continuation of the sale of our Orange Avenue property. I will look to use the VFW building as a very good source of revenue for the village, and I will ask that we remove the additional attorney proposed at $48,000. This will total at about $441,000, which reflects 18.3 percent of the budget. I'm sorry, 4.5 percent of the budget, bringing the budget down to 18.3. So I look forward to all of your comments. We look forward to anyone who has any suggestions. This is what we're here for. This is a team effort between residents and board members to work on this budget so that, you know, we can come to a number where may not be 100 percent comfortable, but better than a 22.8 percent increase. That being said, we will go on with our... It is a little early for our first public hearing, so we'll go to our fire department, Mike Stark. I wish to start by thanking Chief Stark for his service to the village of Suffolk. Mike has been a chief through the ranks for nine years. We celebrated with him on Saturday night as he is now the outgoing chief of the Suffolk Fire Department, so this will be his last meeting. But I must tell you, Mike, that your professionalism and the way that you have taken our fire department forward has just been outstanding, and I, as the mayor of this village, thank you so very, very much for all that you have done for the safety of this village and for its members.
Thank you. Thank you for those kind comments, Mayor. Deeply appreciated. It's a bittersweet time for me. I've spent a good part of my career in the Suffolk Fire Department and the officers' ranks, and I'm definitely gonna miss it, but you have some good officers coming up behind me, believe me. With that said, I have a few items on the agenda this evening. Three of them... Two of the items are three new members. One of them is Nicole Rock, age 16. She's a prospective member of the Suffolk Hook and Ladder. The other two are over 18 members. First one is Kyle Lynch and Louis Mancinello. They're members of the host company.
Do I have a motion for Nicole Rock?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote yes, and motion is carried. Do I have a motion for Kyle Lynch?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes, so moved. Do I have a motion for Louis Mancinello?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I vote yes, so moved.
Mayor, the last item is the final approval for the 2014 LoSAP Service Award Program, which you all will provide copies of.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Once again, thank you for letting me be your fire chief.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, we still have a few more minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. A few things on the agenda this evening. We had yesterday... Usually I don't go backwards in the agenda, but today I'll go just one day yesterday. We had the Broadway Show on the town yesterday. We took 47 people from the village. It was a great day, beautiful day out. The tickets were all sold. We had $95 a ticket, and it was a good time had by all. The next thing that we have on the agenda, we're going to be interviewing for the 2015 lifeguards tomorrow. We have head guards this year. We've chosen Emma Patwell, Barry O'Connor, and Barry Osborne to be our head guards. So we have those coming up, and again, Lou Siatcho and myself will be interviewing for guards starting tomorrow night. We have this Friday night, April 17th, Lead over at the community center, and that's from 8 to 11:00. We have this Saturday, Suffolk Little League is opening day, so there will be a parade in the village starting here at Village Hall and going down to the Village Fields. So we welcome everybody to join us there. This Saturday, April 18th also, there will be an American Legion Road Drive, so we look forward to everyone's support helping out the American Legion. They'll be at the Four Corners here by Soldier's Monument. The street fair at the Chamber of Commerce is coming up, and that's on Sunday, April 19th, between 10:00 and 5:00. It's also a car and bike show, so it should be a wonderful day for the village of Suffolk. We have Keep Rockin' Beautiful, which will be here in Suffolk Saturday, April 25th. The community center is the location for everyone to come in and get their supplies, so we encourage people to sign up and help clean up Suffolk. And again, that's from 9:00 to 12:00. On that day also, we will be having an Arbor Day ceremony. We don't know what time that will be as of yet, we will get those details out, but we welcome the Village Board to attend that. It's always a nice day. And then right now, we are in the process in recreation, working on the summer calendar. We have that all set for... We have that started to be set for the year, so we're looking forward to getting that out by the end of April, beginning of May.
Thank you, Kathy. And again, I'd like to thank you and your staff for a wonderful breakfast with the bunny. I've gotten so many phone calls and emails saying what a wonderful time was had by you all, so thank you for all of your staff and you for doing such a fabulous job.
Thank you, Mayor. And as always, I have to thank the recreation staff and the recreation board for that as they do such a great job with us, so thank you.
Thank you.
And everybody else, DPW, everyone that helps us. Thank you.
Excuse me, Kathy. I just want to make a comment also in regards to the recreation staff and Hudson Valley Honor Flight Ceremony that was put on. You guys did an outstanding job, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, Alain, who's in the back there, did a tremendous job setting up the center for that, so...
For those of you who don't know, the Hudson Valley Honor Flight is a program that flies World War II veterans down to the World War II monument in Washington, DC, and they had a preview here in Lafayette Theater. They put together a movie, and we had a reception in the community center, which was great. It was a great job.
It was. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, it is 7:45, so we will have our first public hearing. It will be on the property tax levy.
The local law that is being proposed and is the subject of this public hearing authorizes the board of trustees to exceed the 2 percent tax cap, and it requires a vote of four affirmative votes from the board of trustees in order to exceed the tax cap. Now? Okay. The local law, sort of the state statutes, would authorize the budget to exceed the 2 percent tax cap. It requires a vote of four members in favor of the local law in order to exceed the tax cap.
Okay, would anybody like to speak with regards to the property tax levy? Okay, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
You have someone in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need you to... Can we have somebody help you come down? This is not the budget, though. Let her know this is the tax levy. Okay. Okay. Then I need a motion to please close the public hearing.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, I would need a motion to... I'm sorry?
To adopt.
Yeah, to adopt the home rule request.
No, no, no. The tax cap.
You have the home rule request here.
Haven't done that yet.
Oh, okay. So we are going to move the... To exceed the 2 percent tax cap.
Can I ask a question? You're exceeding the 2 percent tax cap, but to what percentage?
Well, that will come with the budget. It's just, it could be above 2 percent, that's all it's saying.
Mayor, can this vote be taken along with the... Or prior to... Obviously, it has to be taken prior to the adoption of the budget.
Correct.
Is there any requirement that it be taken tonight? Because I think it would be, if possible, more sensible that people had a number. Obviously, we say it's gonna be over 2 percent, and I don't think anyone in this room thinks that we're gonna have a magic wand and have a number below 2 percent. However, I just think doing those things in conjunction with each other, obviously one having to be prior might make more sense. I'm curious, that's the legality behind it.
The only point is it has to be adopted prior to adoption of the budget.
Right.
Assuming the budget exceeds the 2 percent.
Understood, okay. Then for that reason, I would just move to table the adoption of the override of the tax cap for tonight, understanding that it would have to be done prior to adoption, and I just personally would prefer that it be done at the same time. So my motion would be wanted tabled.
Okay.
I agree with Matt.
I'll second that motion.
You'll second. Okay. I will defer that. I will disagree with that. We have called in the state comptroller's office to do an overview of our budget, and I believe that this is one of the things that they will need to accurately give us an analysis of our budget, Matt, so I would ask that we do vote on this tonight because I have been specifically asked by the state comptroller's office to report back to them in the morning on how we have acted upon the 2 percent tax cap.
Okay, I was not aware of that.
Yeah.
Well, we've made a motion.
I'll withdraw my motion with the understanding that the state comptroller has... By the way, people should know that the board in unison, all five of us, asked for the state comptroller to come in and review the tentative budget to perhaps provide some guidance, assistance, and some input in the process, and they are here every day, as I understand, right?
Yes, they are here every day.
Reviewing all the backup and all the information provided with the budget. So that part of it certainly is accurate. So with the representation the mayor's made as far as that affecting their ability to review the budget, I wouldn't want to hamper their ability to review the budget. That's why we brought them in.
Yeah, otherwise I would have no objection to it, but they did alert me this morning that they would like to have that information tomorrow morning as part of their review, as well as the results of the water and sewer rate increases. So those are the three things that they have asked for.
I'll withdraw my motion.
And if the comptroller was not here reviewing the budget, what would we do? We would just continue with the 2 percent tax cap levy vote?
No.
Or would we table it?
No, we could have tabled it. We wouldn't need to, as long as it's done before the adoption of the budget if the budget is going to exceed the 2 percent tax cap. But in lieu of the fact that the state comptroller has asked for the results on those three items, that would be the reason that I would propose that we do take a vote on it tonight so we can give that to him so they can continue the analysis of the budget.
Well, I personally think it's an important enough issue that I would still make a motion to table this until we have a budget, at which time we will vote to whether or not to go above the cap or not to go above the cap.
Okay, so now I have... Mr. Byrne has withdrawn the motion. Mr. Morris has now re-entered the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Now, this is a motion to table the 2 percent tax cap levy.
Correct.
Right.
No.
Mr. Byrne?
I'm voting no to...
Tabling it.
To tabling it.
Okay. Mr. Byrne?
No.
And I vote no. Right, so now I need a motion to adopt the tax levy.
Just so, Mayor, so everyone understands, the vote now is to permit the village, upon the adoption of the budget, to go beyond the 2 percent tax cap.
Right, it doesn't mean it's gonna be...
It doesn't mean necessarily has to happen and doesn't lock us into a number of any type. Is that right?
That is correct.
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Hagan?
I'm not.
Mr. Markounis?
I'm sorry. Let's be clear again. This is, we made the motion, and now we're voting on exceeding the tax cap.
Yes, this is to adopt the local law that would all support the board to exceed the tax cap.
No.
Now you're voting no. Okay. Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion does not carry. Okay. We do not have... We cannot go exceed the 2 percent tax cap, therefore, our increase in taxes have to be below 2 percent. Okay. We will now continue with our second public hearing, amending the zoning law and zoning map to rezone properties along the east side of Orange Avenue and north side of Chestnut Street. The applicant for Orange Avenue Associates, the attorney for them, has sent a letter over this morning asking that the public hearing be continued as they are having... Making progress now with the property owner who was not working with them with the sale of his property on Orange Avenue. They've asked to continue the public hearing. I would like to suggest that we hold it over until April 27th, so this is before we adopt our budget, so that if, in fact, there is an agreement, we are able to include it in this year's budget. I would need a motion.
I made the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I would just abstain.
Correct, okay. So moved.
April 27th?
April 27th, yeah. We'll do that at, I guess, 7:00 PM. 7:00 PM, yeah.
Mayor, is that gonna be a special meeting just for that purpose, or...
Yes.
Right, and it doesn't have to be re-noticed since we're announcing it tonight. I mean, we'll have certainly an agenda.
Right.
It doesn't have to go out to all the property.
Okay, continuing on is not yet 8 o'clock, so we will go to our village attorney. Thank you, Rob.
Okay, I have a number of items tonight. First of all, we spoke at the workshop meeting about the amendment to the general municipal law that would cover our volunteer firemen for workers' comp when they assist in another municipality. And in order to provide that coverage, you have to adopt the resolution that's been
So I have a motion.
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
At the next item, there'd been a request that the 15-minute parking on Lafayette Avenue not be continual around 8:00, but that it'd end at approximately 5:00. In order to amend the vehicle and traffic provision of the village code, we need to set a public hearing, and you have 7:00.
No, that can't be it's 7:00, because the meeting doesn't start till 7:30.
Right.
Virginia, that has to be 7:40.
7:40.
Okay, not 7:00, because the meeting doesn't start till 7:30. Okay, so it'd be 7:40 on Monday, May 4th. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Sorry? No, no, sorry. The next item, at the workshop meeting, there had been some discussion...
Ladies and gentlemen, it's very difficult for the people in the back to hear, so if we could... Thank you.
There had been some discussion at the workshop meeting with respect to the contract for the village to purchase the American Legion post.
No. The agreement is just not...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that one too, but... We also had the American Legion post with respect to the revision of the agreement so that we would provide certain services to them in exchange for being able to use the building for emergency services when there is a disaster and there needs to be a place to house people. If the revised agreement is acceptable, then you need to authorize a mayor to sign it.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Mayor, I got it. Did you talk to the...
Yes.
Okay. As long as he's okay with it, I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Okay.
Next, you have the municipal home rule law request, as I discussed with the board previously. The deficit financing legislation, which is before the state legislature, requires that the board of trustees adopt a municipal home rule law request, and that also requires four affirmative votes to do so.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Is that the 10-year deficit financing?
Yes, exactly, and in order for the state legislature to act on it, they need a municipal home rule law request.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Okay, we had been discussing the automobile use policy. Mr. Morris gave me a copy of something that had been worked up based on the various regulations that I had provided to the board, and I don't know if you want to act on this tonight or if you want to... Mr. Morris gave me a copy of something that had been worked up based on the various regulations that I had provided to the board, and I don't know if you want to act on this tonight, or if you want to study it and suggest any changes to it.
I'd suggest we take a look at it and see if everybody agrees with it, and if any changes need to be made to it, then...
All right, great. Do you want to make a motion to table?
We'll table it to the next meeting, give everybody a chance to read it.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, and then lastly, as we discussed at the workshop meeting, we're pretty close to finalizing a draft agreement on the cable franchise. In order to move forward with that, we will need to set a public hearing for the next board meeting.
7:45?
Sure.
Okay, the public hearing, whoever's gonna motion, it will be 7:45 on Monday, May 4th?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Done? Okay, it is now 8:00. We will begin our public hearing just at the water rates. Mike, water rates?
Mayor, as part of the budget for the water fund, being one of the funds of the village, there's a need to increase the water rates by approximately 12.5%. As you know, that the water, both the water fund and the sewer fund over the last few years, since 2010, have been borrowing revenue anticipation notes to make up a difference in the financing that they needed throughout the year. But more importantly than that, the rates should be set in order to recover the costs of the water department, including capital items that are generated, debt service, and as well the normal operating costs. The 12.5% is calculated to mesh with the budget itself in order to raise the sufficient funds for the budget for the year 2015-16.
Thank you, Mike. Would anyone like to come up to speak on the water rates?
Jim Genetino, Two Memorial Drive. I thought the village board some years back had come up with a plan to wipe out the debt in these two funds. Am I mistaken? I don't think so. But evidently, it hasn't worked.
Is that your only question?
Yes.
Okay. Janito? Would you like to speak on where we are with the deficit?
Well, I wasn't here when any plan was developed, but I will tell you that the water fund is in a deficit. It has been an operating deficit, and in order to make up that difference, the water rates are needed to match it. But I wasn't here for the plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. What I would like to say is, yes, the former treasurer did present to the board a deficit reduction plan for the water fund, and yes, Mr. Genetino, you are correct. That was proposed as a successful plan, and it was not successful.
Was it ever mentioned? Was it ever included?
Yes. Yes.
I'm sure that it was successful.
That's correct.
Did you report that at all in meetings?
No, when Mr. Genet... Yeah. I want you to come up and ask your questions, so that everyone can hear them.
Okay, my next question regards to these funds are, I don't see any cuts in any expenses in either one of these funds. I understand we have a deficit situation, but you can't expect the taxpayers to keep paying 12% increases, 14% increases. How long is it gonna take to get out of this mess? Do we have a five-year plan again to get out of this mess? I mean, we did it once, it didn't work. It's very easy to just keep saying, pay more, pay more. These people pay for everything. I mean, we have to find a way to have a reasonable increase in these fees and these funds and not vote on the backs. Look around. I mean, I'm a senior citizen. I see a lot of senior citizens here. I see some young families here. They can't afford these increases. We need to learn how to live within our means. We haven't done it in years. Believe me, I didn't do it for applause. We cannot do this year after year, and unfortunately, how bright is our future? We're gonna lose Novartis possibly next year. That's another million. We're gonna borrow five more million from the state. What's our debt now? Seven million, so we're up to 12 million. You can't dig a hole by just taxing the people. We have to learn how to cut some costs. It's not nice, it's not easy. We're not looking to hurt anybody, but you can't hurt all those people either.
My name is Patsy Winters. I live at 19 Mansfield. I had got involved in fighting the desalination plant, even though I live in Suffolk and drink Suffolk municipal water. And it was drawn to my attention that United Water charges the fourth highest rate in the country. This is before desalination, okay? Rates would double with desalination. And thanks to the efforts of many good citizens in the county, that proposal has been stopped in its tracks and now on part of the water task force. But this isn't Suffolk water, I'm talking about Rockland County water, all right? It's a private company based in Paris. Our two neighbors, Hilburn and Slotesburg, neglected their water systems, and they chose the answer that has been chosen by municipalities around the world. Go jump into the arms of United Water. Now, the mayor said that United Water charges twice what Suffolk charges. I'm not sure if that's the case. My calculations say they currently charge four times, so I could be wrong. But if we neglect our water system, that's the next thing that happens, guys. We need to take care of our water system. It's not an if or whether. We need to do this if we want to stay out of the clutches of United Water. I have a question for the board. I'm not sure what the unit of water is that's charged. Teaspoons, acre feet, 100 cubic feet? I don't know, there's millions of measures of water. So what is the unit? What does it consist of?
100 cubic feet.
Oh, 100 cubic feet, thank you. Then I believe that it's far more than twice. So that's the future. If we don't pay the piper, we get to pay four times what we're paying now. Like it? I don't.
Michael Currie, Orange Avenue, Suffolk, New York. The water problems, the debt that we haven't cured now, and the villagers suffering, started years ago. It started back when, probably back when John Keating was mayor, all right? At that time, we had a proposal to sell water. United Water wanted to buy some of our water, okay? There was meetings. Chris St. Lawrence from the town of Ramapo called a meeting, okay? Now, I recognize, I think, Ms. Winters, you might have been at that meeting, I think you were against selling the water at the point. I know Jim Genetino was against selling the water. For the last seven years, I've yelled, "Let's sell the water." I've been laughed at many times years ago, okay? But the reality is, we have an asset, and as the time goes on and years go on, that asset is gonna become more valuable, okay? As you watch however, you look at California, you look at the things, as Ms. Winters just mentioned here, it could be as much as four times more they're paying, okay? I don't like an increase as well as anybody, and my increase even goes more because I have a commercial property, all right? So I'm not happy with it, and I'm mad as hell that they didn't sell the water, okay? But the same people now who are saying, complaining about it, didn't understand what happens. Suffolk has its own wells, and the water flows there. We can only hold so much water in the wells. The rest of the water goes back in the river and into the Hudson. I had proposed, after I heard about it, it wasn't my idea, but I caught on to a good idea, and I said, "Let's stick with it," to sell that extra water. And if we ever had a drought, we're allowed to turn that valve off. Back at that time, they offered about, and I'm reaching into my memory here, right? About $125,000 they offered us back then, okay? We're now in negotiations with, now to sell our extra water, but now they know we're in a little different position, so they're playing strong business with us, all right? We may have to consider looking at other assets where we can sell that water, whether it's NIAC, it's more costly to do that, okay? But we can make money off of our water in time, okay? And if we would have done that years ago, right, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have that 12% now. We may even have a decrease in our water, all right? Thank you.
I just have one gentleman, and then, hold on, hold on, Carolyn. Just give me one minute, I have a gentleman here, and then Carolyn, and then Tom.
Charles Barone, Five Mansfield Place. When I came to the meeting and I heard numbers, 12% water increase, 22% budget increase, I took out my phone and I Googled, "What was the rate of inflation for 2014?" It was 1.6%. 2013, it was like 1.9%. These numbers seem very large to me, and instead of having a one-year 12% increase, could we have a multi-year that we know it's gonna be for this year, for the year after, and for the year after that, to get to the 12 gradually?
I'm gonna let Mike answer you, but unfortunately, Charles, there are some numbers in this increase that are not changeable. They're not numbers that can be changed or taken out of the budget. There's some fixed increases that are just what they are. I'm gonna let Mike Janito get up and explain to you why, in fact, there's more than a 4% increase, just in those numbers that are not variables.
Thank you.
Well, begin with, we really can't compare the Consumer Price Index or inflation rate that we all might pay for compared to what a water utility has to pay for, sewer utility has to pay for. They are under some very, very strict Health Department and Department of Environmental Conservation, as well as the EPA, regulations that require them to spend money that you and I wouldn't normally spend in our households. So there's things like chemicals and controls, both in water and in sewer, that go far beyond what we would normally spend or expect to see in an increase in our households. So, and a Consumer Price Index, or the cost of living increase, inflation, as it's normally called, talks about a normal family that has housing and food and clothing insurance and things like that to buy, but it can't be compared to a commercial establishment, especially like a water or sewer utility. Part of what's happened over the course of time is the water fund and the sewer fund haven't had enough of the revenues coming in. So for instance, as we look, even with the increases that were there, we look at the sewer fund as one example, and while we budgeted $1.6 million for revenues to come in, they're more likely to come in at $1.5 million. A lot of reasons for that. Part of it is how people use water, and how many people are not using it this year. So that's one thing that happens. The other thing that may be happening is just simply a miscalculation on what we expected to happen during this year. So that, when that happens during the year, and it also happened in the sewer and the water plant both, you also have some expenses that are going to exceed what your normal revenues are, because certain things come up. The DEC has, for instance, a consent order on our sewer plant at the moment to prevent certain things from happening that will damage the environment. And you have to comply with these. If you don't comply with them, you pay pretty heavy fines. In the water fund, it's all about water quality. You have some of the best water anywhere in Suffolk, New York. And yes, we have our own artesian wells that have been there for a very, very long time. And I can tell you that we do pay about one-quarter the price if you are in equivalent home with United Water. But I would never want to compare the price with somebody else is paying. It's really what's important to us in making sure we have our costs covered. So it was mentioned that the state comptroller's office was asked to come in, and by the board unanimously, to come in and review the budget, and they are doing that at this moment. I can tell you that I met with the auditor last Thursday, and I had a lengthy discussion with him, and one of the things that he is looking at and he is concerned about is our water and sewer structure, the revenues versus the expenses of it. And he wants to make sure that we have a plan in place to bring them up to a proper balance. When I mentioned the increases we had, and said that they're a little bit onerous because they're so high, a double-digit increase, he said that's something that he's going to look to see if we do or don't do it, because that's gonna make a big difference in how he writes up his report on how we're handling the budget. But the most important thing, I think, here is, this budget wasn't put together on a whim. It was put together by the department heads, putting in their submitted requests, both for revenues and expenditures, and I sat down with them on more than one occasion, and went over the various items, and in some items, they did cut some additional things where they could. They found other things where they had no choice. And for that, we ended up with the budgets where they are. So that, I can tell you that these budgets are structurally sound, and the former mayor mentioned that, you know, we're going to lose Novartis eventually, and maybe something will or won't come into place. We do know that they're gonna reduce their water usage over time, and that's another concern we're going to have. But once again, the things that you can cut in both the water and the sewer fund, there's a limitation to that, because you do need so many people to operate the plants, you do need so many people to make sure that the quality of the water going out is proper, and that the infrastructure, which is not only the plants themselves, but all the many miles of lines that are out there, that have to be kept in good order, so that good potable water is brought to your home. I think that's about the best I can explain it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike.
Excuse me, Mike, I have one question.
Yes.
In regards to the water fund. In previous years, are you aware of that, if we have, if we had borrowed any revenue anticipation notes or bonds against, to fund the water department?
You're talking about the infrastructure of it?
Yes.
So, the last...
Mike, just hold up one second. Virginia Justice has to change tapes. I'm sorry.
You're wrong.
Okay.
We have borrowed money in the past, and we continue to borrow money. Normally, they borrow for, the village has borrowed for a very short period of time.
Right.
With the exception that in 2012, we did issue long-term bonds of, for both the sewer department and the, and for the general fund, not for the water department per se, but the sewer department in that bond issue was $2.5 million.
$2.5 million in 2012?
2012. And we continually borrowed approximately $1.2 million this year to help fund additional improvements that are needed.
Thank you, Mike.
Excuse me, ma'am. I just, I'm gonna get to you, I just have two other people that are coming up before you. Carolyn, you were next. And Tom. You can go after Carolyn.
Hi, Carolyn Varano, Suffolk. Lived here all my life. At one point, we had a system where if somebody came in, built a house, wanted to connect because they had the septic system, their own groundwater, they needed to pay their own, whatever the cost was, to hook up and connect, putting the, laying the pipes in, everything else. With all the construction and the building that's going on now, I just have a question. What is the impact on our sewers and our water? Are these people footing the bill, or is it our taxpayers that are going to foot the bill for these people that are doing the building and construction?
Okay, in other words, are they paying for their own hookups to the village? Yeah, they have to put their own, their own pipes in, they have to, yes, they have to do all of that themselves. And they also have to pay a hookup fee to the village.
Okay, and the other question was, I personally went to United Water, and interviewed them, spoke with people there, went over the system, how it would be used, when they wanted to put the desal in. They had no intentions of using any other water system. Their ultimate plan was to take over the full entire water system with the Hudson River Desal, shutting down our reservoirs as well as any other access water. I asked them, and that's exactly what they told me. Now, that's what they did in Melbourne, Australia, is what they did over on the Nile. These guys are ruthless, the money that it costs the people that... These guys are ruthless, the money that it costs the people that use that water now. Melbourne, Australia's water rate skyrocketed tremendously. If we end up selling to them, we need to hold these power springs. We need to have the control, not them. You need to cover your own, make sure they have no way, and I guess Terry knows enough about that, being an attorney, that they can't fobig their way to come in with some loophole and take over our water and control us rather than us control our water ourselves.
Thank you, Carolyn. Tom?
As has been stated, there was a deficit reduction plan that was put in place by myself and the board. And for various reasons, it hasn't come to fruition. These reasons have been discussed numerous times over the years. General, for instance, when Fandy came along, we didn't record using our water, we didn't provide water, we had a budget of $62,000 that was, you know, nobody expected to pay that. So there was certain things, a couple of years, we managed to reduce it, but the two years when we had hurricanes, we weren't able to reduce it. I'm not exactly sure what the deficit is. When it started, when we started this plan, it was $630,000 in the Water Fund. And the left was $485,000 or thereabouts. According to this budget, when it shows the actual results for 2014, we attempted to reduce the deficit in the Water Fund by 70,000. And what it shows in this budget is that it was reduced by 64,000. So I think, although we didn't make our goal of 70, we only had to, you know, reduce the deficit. And this year's current budget for 2015, we had budgeted to reduce the deficit by $148,000. I know that the Water Fund is very, very big in terms of cost that you don't grow up. So, and I know that in 2014, on April, almost 80 days, we made it by like $6,000. So I presume that it would be very close, if we exceed $148,000, I remember. So probably, let's say, on what kind of budget, instead of continuing $148,000 to reduce the deficit, we're increasing it to 289,000. So it's only closing at $148,000. Also, presumably, it isn't that, that's the way we project the deficit from what we need and we need to probably, I don't know, the deficit. Is that correct?
Yeah?
That's correct. So we're projecting our deficit to be 289,000.
No, Mike, the, the projected deficit is going to be less, correct?
Yes. That $289,000 you're referring to is in, in the contingent account?
Right.
That money is for two things. One is contingency for the things that we do not expect, or the unanticipated, I should say, that may happen during the year. And the rest of it is to replenish the Water Fund to start building its fund balance back up. It is in a deficit, and the deficit is larger than what appeared in the 2012 statements mainly because one of the things that was listed was the receivables from the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund in those years, at the end of that fiscal year. Those were actually dedicated or restricted to pay back the revenue anticipation notes. So while that showed up as an asset that year, it was really a restricted asset. It gets a little bit technical there, but the bottom line is it was in a more severe deficit than originally projected.
What's the actual number today for 5/31/14?
Mayor, rather than try to pick a note out of my head, I would prefer to get the numbers. I'll be, I'll have them prepared tomorrow for whoever would like to see them.
Thank you, Mike.
The reason I'm going to throw up is because to add $148,000 for, you know, if it's strictly deficit reduction, I can understand the reasoning behind it as far as potential, you know, for certain things within the Water Fund, we may be a bit dependent and, of the hurricanes. But if we can lower that number from 289,000 to a number saying 200,000, you know, then we bring a 12%, 12% increase down to maybe 78%. And still, if nothing goes wrong, and we have $200,000, that number's built into the budget going forward, which will, if there's any remaining deficit, the subsequent, it can finally be paid off. And the 289,000, the general forecast is right, 18%. And the Sewer Fund going up also, I think it would be good to, maybe 289,000 a bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, can I ask Mike a question in regards to the Water Fund? Just to elaborate a little bit on Mr. Zoradan. Mr. Janito, if you don't mind. I just want to elaborate on, on Mr. Zoradan's statement in regards to the Water Fund and the contingent account. If, if we can make it a little more clear that we're adding $140,000 to the contingent account and with that is due to the fact that we have to, well, we have to increase the rate to pick up that extra $140,000 to the contingency, to the contingent account.
Yes. One of the reasons why it's a larger number two is we just spoke about Novartis. We did a, an analysis of the last few years that Novartis has paid in their water and sewer, and it's about $300,000 a year in water that they pay, which they say they're going to cut in half. I would suggest that we leave that contingency where it is, given the condition of where Novartis and, and the likelihood that Novartis will be indeed cutting back. We received an official email from them that they were cutting it back by 50%.
So we definitely need the $140,000 contingent account in place with the, the rate increase as is.
That would be my recommendation. Of course, the board can make a decision any way it wants. I'm recommending what I believe is the best practice here, which is to say, if we are going to lose a major customer worth about $150,000 a year, that that contingency is probably more real than we'd want it to be.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary. I don't know much about this.
Mary, can you just give us your full name and address?
I'm Mary Figuera. I live in Squire's Gate. My question is this, if you're increasing the budget 22.8%, is that evenly dispersed throughout the whole village, including all homes, condos, all the new construction?
Yes, everybody's tax rate will be the same.
Are there any exemptions to that? I, I don't mean churches, religious, I mean people in homes. There's no exemptions.
No.
So everyone that owns a home or has a condo, even all the new construction going on-
Receive, receive the same taxes.
Okay, all right. The other question I had, you mentioned sewer repairs. Where, where have they been done? Have they been done in Squire's Gate? I mean, I haven't seen any. That's why I'm just wondering where the sewer repairs are done.
If I may, I think the biggest issue with the sewer system itself, one big piece is the wastewater treatment plant. And again, that consent order from the Department of Environmental Conservation. As a matter of fact, we negotiated with them to give us a little breathing room to start implementing some of the work, but they've already told us that the work that we need to do is probably close to $2 million in improvements. Now, this, this has to do with the treatment of the sewage, the lining of the pipes, a lot of stuff that you don't necessarily see. It's not individual homeowners' repairs.
No, I understand that.
It's major system repairs.
But it hasn't been done in Squire's Gate at all.
I think Mr. Zawicki would have the answer for the repairs.
You know, the only reason I'm saying this, I live there and I haven't seen any sewer repair. It was done within the plant, all the improvements and all of the-
So nothing in the pipes and the sewers going through Squire's Gate?
Everything was done in, in the plant itself.
Okay, all right. That answers that question.
Yes.
I guess that's it. I guess that's all I have.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Alfred Dambrosia, Four Cross Street, Suffolk, New York. I don't understand why we seem to always be imitating big government. They always go into deficit, they always go belly up, and we seem to be doing the same thing in a way. Now, this last thing where there's $2 million, whatever it is, is in the plant. Why the devil isn't the plant just being the one who's being, should be paying, or those who control the plant rather than the populace?
It's our plant.
Yes, and maybe our plant, but then, this has been known about for a long time. $2 million in one little zone and one experimental application to try remedy it, and yet we're hearing a, a multi-year thing that is going to take on loans. This sounds like it's humongous.
There's not, there's no experimental repairs being done. These are consent orders from the DEC that they are ordering us to do.
I wasn't saying experimental repairs. I'm saying experimental processes to try to get it remedied, but it's not being remedied apparently because we're on a long-term basis.
No, it is being remedied or else the DEC would not approve the upgrades and the remedies that have been put in place for the sewer plant. So all of this goes through the DEC.
Well, let's grant, maybe it is, and maybe it's part of our community, but I'm surprised, I, I don't know, but I'm surprised that all of the new construction from our block, Four Cross Street across the way, the huge Mormon castle, the one over there which is going to be rented if it's done yet, another Goldstein project, I'm surprised that they're not able to bring enough money in that some of this would be reduced rather than still, everything is going up. And why do we have then, how, let's put it this way, a lot of entertainment things that we must have for all of us, we need our entertainment, we have to have all these things which cost money. Why aren't we tightening our belts instead of finding ways to spend money? The wrong ways, while this might be a real valid one, but all these other things where we just heard us talk, well, we had this thing, it came in earlier in the very beginning of the meeting. I like these things for our youth and for this and that, but if we're really almost on bankrupt, just like the government, then it's time to tighten our belt and stop doing all these nice things for us. Thank you.
Oh my gosh. Did you do hurdles when you were in school? Okay, there you go.
Basketball, too.
There you go.
Just one statement I'd like to make. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Markounis for the email today to let people know that this was taking place in the, I wish it was a little earlier, maybe like last week, at the same 2:00 or 3:00 p.m. I mean, we're giving people four hours, five hours before the meeting if they had plans.
Well, I did request that the meeting be posted on the homepage of the website, on the Suffolk Village website. Which seemed to be a problem last week also. I think it was a problem again this week. So I noticed that and I took it upon myself to send out a few notifications to make sure that people were aware.
Well, it's because of your email that a lot of these people hear.
Mr. Markounis, it was definitely on the village website. It was put up on the website. I was able to access it.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think you were at much more to email to you than you do having to go look at a town.
Right. The unfortunate part is, is that the village doesn't have a complete email list of all of its residents, so we use the village website as a means of communication with all of our residents because you can all access us. So anytime you want to know if there's something going on, a meeting or an event or anything, check the village website. All the information is put up on there.
The other thing I wanted to mention was, I, I spent a lot of years in corporate, about 10 years or 30 years, in charge of each other's management. And you know, every September, October time of year, all the managers would cringe because they knew the budget was going up. Right? Senior management would say, 2% maximum, that's it. Everybody gets a little corner and you get another 3% here and another 5% there, and pretty soon you have a 6% budget. The managers who maintain their 2%, didn't appreciate that. I got one through one here. Is there any reason why all of this backlash from previous years has to take place with you? Can you, can you clarify this?
You're talking about on the budget as a whole?
The budget as a whole.
Yeah, but right now, we need to be talking about the water rates, but we will get to that. We are going to be having the public hearing on the budget.
I think that's why everybody's here tonight because of the 22.8%.
Right.
The water rates probably are very low. This gentleman, this gentleman behind me seems to know his business, seems to appreciate the need for the state to come in and DEC and all this kind of stuff. I don't know the details. That's why he's the manager and I'm not. But the water is a very important thing. That's something that can't be postponed, it can't be put three years out. But some of the things that people are objecting to is being slapped in the face with a lot of money at once. That's what we'd like something to do.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak with regards to the water rates? Okay, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion?
May, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, I would need a motion to adopt the water rates, local law, number? Number eight. Sorry? Number two. Do I have a motion? Okay.
May I just briefly, if I could? It sounds to me that there are some variables, although not many, and Mike has pointed this out. One of them might be whether any discussions with outside entities in terms of selling assets might assist us with regard to the water rate. Might that be a variable, Mike? Uh, water.
Water.
Water, as an asset.
It certainly could be a variable. The question would be is if you have a contract in hand that know, that you know you're going to get that revenue in.
Understood, understood. And I don't know whether, at what, what stage that's at, but I, I'm not comfortable voting to set the water rates without checking on all those variables as a result of our public hearing tonight and as a result of us considering what might be out there that might change things between now and the, the time we have to adopt. So I would, I would rather not take a vote on the water rates tonight just for that reason, that there may be some variables and something we can do that rate that could change it.
Again, I must tell you that the State Comptroller's auditors were here and they are waiting to complete the assessment of the, the budget at our request, and they need these answers to be able to complete it. So if in fact, we do not complete the answers to these questions by the time that they, they can't complete, they can't complete the assessment because they don't have all of the, the different. So, okay, but, okay, excuse me, there's no, please, no yelling out. The, the fact of the matter is, is this budget has to be adopted before May 1st.
Right.
So there's not a lot of time. But if you, if you pass the, the increase in the water rates tonight, that does not mean that if in fact, we do come to a deal or we do find a way to reduce the increase that we cannot amend that. We can amend it at any time. In the benefit for us, we can amend it, those, of course, that's what I'm saying. So if- So, if in fact, the sale of United Water and we have a signed contract, we can amend the water rate before the budget is passed to reflect whatever we do find to, to, to reduce the, the increase.
Well, it's similar to the property tax cap that we made a motion on, if I may. We made a motion to adopt the property tax cap at 2%, which brings that out to a vote. So, we make a motion, and then we vote on it, and actually, the property tax cap went down, we voted no. So, now, what's taking place is the same thing, is that we're going to take, someone might make a motion, and then we'll take a vote on it. Even if we vote no, or yes, we can amend it afterwards. That's, that would be the process. So, definitively, we would know where we stand if we pass it or we don't, which will help the comptroller ma, make his report or decision, his audit, more viable. So, that, that may clear it up for some of you. So, I make a motion to adopt the water rates.
Local law.
Local law.
Number two. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
No.
Mr. Byrne?
No.
Seven.
Okay. Motion is not carried.
Just, Mayor, I would, I would have preferred to word it as a motion to table to consider the rate in the future, but I think it has to stay at that, at the end of that.
Okay. Alrighty, uh, we will go on to the next public hearing to set the sewer rates. I think that we kind of have touched upon that with the, the water rates, public hearing, but is there anyone who would like to add anything additional to the sewer rents?
Yes.
I'm not going to repeat what I said about the water, but it does go for this one. My question is, the state has put out $200 million in grants for water and sewer systems. Has our request gone in already? Because if not, all these big towns and villages are going to snap up the 200 million, and we'll be borrowing another 2 million for the sewer plant at, we don't know what rate.
Yes, Mr. Rowa has, in fact, gathered all the information on what the criteria is for the money, and he is presently working with Mr. Sawicki in, in applying for that funding.
The early bird gets the money.
Correct.
So, we can't work on it for three weeks. He should be burning midnight oil and be the first one in there, and hopefully, they'll consider this little village. I don't know what rate they're going to charge, because I think there's grants involved with this money.
Correct.
It's probably 60, 40, I believe.
There's also a criteria now that they've implemented, we may or may not fall within the guidelines of it. We're working, we're working with the, with the funding office, as well as within our own departments to come up with enough information that they may possibly allow us to be a part of the program, even though some of the criteria we, we may not meet.
And unfortunately, I brought this up for years, that we should have been looking into the Clean Water Act over the last several years when we borrowed this $4 million. We may have been able to get some money from the federal government, or the state government, and we wouldn't have to pay back $4 million plus. Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak with regards to the sewer rents? Okay, if not, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Do I have a motion to adopt the sewer rents?
I make a motion to table sewer rents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, Mr. Morris?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote no, only for the simple reason, not that I am in favor of the increase being as high as it is, I certainly will be looking into, continue to look into ways to reduce that percentage. However, we have gone out of our way to get an analysis from the state comptroller's office, we have asked them to come down here and do that for us, so we can have a sense of some input from them on ways that we can reduce our budget, and without this information, that's not going to be completed. So, for that reason, I will vote no.
Well...
But, the motion is carried.
I'd just like to say something, and I, I understand your concern for the auditors that are, are doing the books right now, but if you remember, and we go back a couple of months, we made a recommendation at that time that you refused to follow.
No, Mr. Morris, that's not...
Excuse me, I'm speaking now.
Okay, but you're, you're giving incorrect information.
Excuse me, I'm accurate, and we can pull the minutes if you'd like.
Absolutely, please go right ahead.
Thank you. We made a motion to bring in a financial review board. The financial review board, there's nothing mandatory about it, what they do, and they've done it for any number of cities throughout the state, is they'll come in and they look at your budgets. There was a comptroller's report out not too long ago, that Ed and I used when we ran for office, that highlighted all the inefficiencies and discrepancies that were present in our budget, the overestimation of revenue, et cetera, et cetera, which is what got us into this hole. The financial review board, the board members voted to ask them to come in, look at our budgets, see what we're doing wrong, and correct them. And again, I, I stress this very importantly, because the misinformation was that as soon as you put these people out there, they're going to take away the sewer, they're going to take away the police, they're going to take away this. There is absolutely not a grain of truth, and you can go on to the state comptroller's board to find that I'm saying is accurate. There is nothing, except their advice. They will lay out a plan for us, or they would have laid out a plan for us. If we chose to become part of that plan, well, then, we might have been under certain obligations if we decided to take grants or money that was available under this program. In those cases, we might have been obligated to follow up on, on their plans. But, rather than do this a couple of months ago when we had the opportunity, we couldn't do it as a board, we needed the chief financial officer, which is the mayor, to approve this financial board coming in. And a lot, again, a lot of these issues with the budget might have been identified earlier, and we might have been able to circumvent some of these problems. But, the mayor at that time chose not to allow the town to continue into that.
Okay, are you finished, Ms. Morris?
Yes.
First of all, we're not a town, we're a village. But, that being said, I should note that there are two different programs that Mr. Morris is talking about, I think he's confusing them. The, the program that they had proposed several months back was a program where the state comptroller's office would look over the services of this village, okay? And they would make recommendations on how to consolidate services in order to save the village money. I don't believe, and I still do not believe, that anyone in this room moved to this village to give up their services, to give up their police department, to give up their fire department, to give up their sewer plant, to give up their water plant. So, for those reasons, I did not feel that that was an appropriate program for this village. However, when they did come to us, when, when the board members came and said that the state comptroller's office will come over and do an analysis, a general analysis, to see what the increases were, where they were, if they were enough, and if we certainly were on a good path of restoring financial health to this village, that I agree to. We can always use any opinion from them, any suggestions from them, that can reduce our 22.8% increase. So, I definitely signed off on that, and I was very, very excited to have them come over and look over our financial budget to give recommendations. So, you should know that those, these were completely two different scenarios for help from the state comptroller's office.
If I may add to that, the initial, because I feel a little differently than you do, Mayor, the initial request for the financial control board was to come in and do a comprehensive financial review. If, that is the main understanding of the review, a comprehensive review of the finances of this village. There was no mention of any consolidation, we did not discuss it, we were not planning on it, this is, it was a comprehensive review. I took it upon myself to call a comptroller, discuss it personally with them, also request them to come in just to review our budget, just to get some type of oversight, to see what's going on with our budget with these astronomical increases that we are facing. So, we welcomed it, and thank you for signing the letter, the whole board, the whole board wanted this to happen. The whole board wanted the financial review board to come in, with the exception of the mayor. She needed to concur initially, there has nothing to do with consolidation of services. So, Bob and I, I, I believe we're on the same track.
Okay, I disagree with you, Mr. Markounis, because if in fact... If in fact, you go to the state comptroller's website and you do your homework on the program, the recommendations that they make for reducing debt to the village is consolidation of services. So, okay.
That's if you take money, if you take their loans, or grants, or whatever they're offering you, then you're bound by their recommendations. There's nothing wrong with accepting recommendations if you feel they're worthy. If you don't feel that you want to consolidate a, a department, you don't consolidate, you don't take their grant money.
Okay. Uh... So, I need a, no, I need a motion to close, I'm, I'm sorry, we did that, okay, we've, we voted, there's no sewer rents, okay. Public hearing on the 2015-2016 village budget. I will open the floor for anyone who would like to speak.
Yeah. Roy.
Shh, excuse me, thank you.
Good evening, Roy Chudy, 16 Lonigan Drive, Suffolk, New York. It's nice to see everybody here, I wish we had something like this for every monthly meeting. For this budget that's upcoming, I personally believe that no stone should be left unturned, and that every option needs to be explored, every option. And, and one thing that I've heard tonight, well, I haven't heard, I should say, is, is a word that is abhorred by, whether you're a union member, a worker, doesn't matter, and that is cuts. And I believe that everything starts at the top, and I would like to see it proposed, instead of taxes being imposed, further taxes imposed on hard-working people, who are overtaxed as it is, that it starts at the top. It starts at the top, and by that, I mean, I would like to see the mayor, the board, and every management position take a 10% cut and pay right now. I'm not pandering, this, this is a fact, you have to lead for, by example. You, you just can't say, "We screwed up, you pay." It doesn't work. With regard to the village employees, by saying that we're not going to hire anybody in the future, or we'll table it, that's not a cut, that's status quo. What we need is, is true cuts. I was, I've been a New York City employee, I was a police officer in New York City for 24 years, I happen to know a little about this, I served as a delegate for two years, so I know, as a union member, you always want the best for your men, you try to do the best for your people, but somewhere in between, you have to, you have to meet in the middle. And by that, I say that every employee of this village should have to pay a percentage into their health care. Health, everybody would love to have free health care, I did 24 years in the city, I paid into my health care, I paid in my pension, and to expect taxpayers to continue to have to do this, I think it, it's not, it's just not fair. I'm not talking a large amount of money, but a percentage, something that would be agreeable to all. Another thing I have to say is, when you hear the word consolidation, you're making it sound like almost communism. Consolidation could be a good thing, it, it reduces redundancy of work, paperwork, and, and everything that goes along with it. So, New York City did consolidation of three police departments into one, and they was, and now they're by far and away the best police department in, in, in the world. And, and so, I, I think that everything should be on the table. You arbitrarily stated that you would not consolidate, think of consolidating our police departments.
That's not what I said, Mr. Chudy, what I did say was that it would not be agreeable to get, to giving our police services over to consolidate with another municipality, town, village. What I, what I would do...
You said nobody in here would consider...
Giving up our police department.
Wrong, your answer, wrong.
So, so, excuse me, can we not, can we not shut out from the audience? What I would consider is our police department consolidating with other municipalities on, in our village, so that our residents are still served by our police department first.
Again...
While I would be agreeable to.
Okay, so...
But I would not want to give our police department over to the town of Ramapo, I'm very sorry.
I believe Slutzburg did the same, and I, I checked their crime stats and their, and their, their responses, and everything is still status quo with them, they, they didn't have a decrease in, in that. Has nothing to do with the police department, I love the police officers as much as anybody, I think Chief Clark and, and, and the Suffolk Police Department does a great job, but there's no reason that this couldn't also become a police precinct and you still receive the same coverage. But it should be explored, I'm not just saying it should be done.
As Hillburn and Slutzburg do with one car that's shared?
Excuse me?
As Hillburn and Slutzburg do with one car that's shared?
Yes, they, they haven't had any decrease in crime.
Do you know what the response rate would be to a medical emergency for that?
I'm saying that this should still be a precinct, a police precinct, you're not pulling anybody out of here. It's, all I'm saying is it should be explored, I'm not saying it should be done.
Okay.
But, but every option should be on the table, that, that's all I'm, I'm saying on that. I have in my hand here a copy from the New York State Office of the State Comptroller on Fiscal Stress Monitoring, and again, this is, goes as up to 5/31/2013, whereas we all know, the, the village of Suffolk is the most fiscally stressed village in the state, with a fiscal score of 86.7. The closest to us is Amityville in Suffolk with 70.8, and then it goes on and on and on. The fiscal stress monitoring system, villagers in distress for that year, was 86.7. During fiscal years 2008, '09 through 2011, '12, the board, this is according to Thomas Stenapoli, the board adopted unrealistic budgets that caused large deficits in the monies available to be appropriated for the ensuing year's budgets, or for contingency or emergency needs. These budgets were caused by unrealistic budget estimates and the board's insufficient monitoring of financial operations throughout the year. Local governments in poor financial condition often experience recurring operating deficits. Persistent operating deficits are usually indicative of poor budgeting that can result in cash flow problems and/or deficit fund balances. The general fund had deficits in its unexpended funded, funds of $674,575 in '08, '09, $217,145 in 2010, '12. The deficit in the sewer funds, unexpended funds, increased by $750,000. The Water Fund also experienced deficits in its unexpended funds from '08, '09 through '11, '12, ranging from $524,336 to $608,039 for that period. Goes on to state, "The board's budgeting practices caused these deficits. On the date April 1, 2013, a motion to adopt the 2013-14 budget was made by trustee Abato, seconded by trustee Megan Corrigan, and in favor was Mayor Dagan LeCourt, trustee Charles Fasiglier, Joe Megan Corrigan, trustee John Meehan. On April 2, 2012, a motion to adopt the budget was made by trustee Abato, seconded by trustee Corrigan, in favor Mayor LeCourt, trustee Abato, trustee Corrigan, trustee John Meehan, and abstaining was Charles Fasiglier. On the date April 4, 2011, a motion to adopt the 2011-12 fiscal year budget was made by trustee Bruce Simon, seconded by trustee Corrigan, in favor Mayor Dagan LeCourt, trustee Simon, trustee Abato, trustee Corrigan, no's none, absent trustee Meehan. As is reported by the State Fiscal Monitoring System, both the past village board's budgeting practices has caused these deficits along with the inability to stabilize continued deficits. This has placed the village as the number-one most fiscally distressed in the entire state. Now placing the onus on the backs of the tax-paying public due to the above is unacceptable. Senior citizens who live on small retired incomes and young families who struggle to make ends meet cannot and should not be asked to bear the burden of a past fiscal irresponsibility. Instead of tax increases, drastic cuts have to be found. A tax increase in all probability will cause some families, for no fault of their own, to claim bankruptcy. Better that a village become the recipient of Chapter 9, Title 11. Then have true professionals oversee and straighten out the financial mess that the village is currently in. And again, I say this with no disrespect for our police department, which I have the greatest respect for. All I'm asking is that everything be viewed as a consideration. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Chudy.
I did not plan on speaking tonight, but Mr. Chudy? Is that your name? Yeah, he said some things I don't agree with. Okay?
I just need to state your name.
My name is John Mallon, Suffolk PBA president. You're talking about cuts, right? About two years ago, no, about two years ago, Mayor Bloomberg was complaining about New York City getting a supplement, $12,000 supplement, which they deserved. They negotiated back in 1968, and I think again in 1980. Okay? You didn't offer to give up your supplement, did you? Yeah, your $12,000, yeah. Did you offer to give it back?
No, Mr. Chudy.
No, I'm talking. You sit down, I'm talking. Did you? Yeah, answer. Did you give it back?
Let me ask you that. Let me answer that.
Excuse me, excuse me.
You deserved the $12,000. Did you give it back? I did.
How's that $12,000 come about?
It was negotiated.
No, it wasn't.
It was negotiated in 1968.
Mr. Chudy! Mr. Chudy! Mr. Chudy! Just, just... Excuse, okay. Mr. Chudy, excuse me!
When you make that decision, I'm gonna tell you. I'm gonna answer. I'm gonna answer this gentleman's question.
Answer it.
Okay. In 1968, New York City was completely broke. They were going bankrupt. They came to the PBA, and they stated, "Listen, we have to, can we borrow money out of your general funds? We gave them over $100 million." They said, "Okay, now we have to negotiate. How are we gonna pay this back?" They used to have something called deferred compensation, whereas when you retired, you would receive money based on what came out of the stock market. Then they came out with an idea. This was the city of New York that came up to the PBA and said this. "We will give you a defined benefit."
You're not giving it. I agree with you. You shouldn't give it up. You should not give it up. This was a loan. You should not give it up. Now get away from me, please. You don't belong up here. No, that's it. You came up here. You deserve it. You should never give it up. But you didn't give it up. They came back and answered it in 2010, '11.
Ladies and gentlemen...
They answered, and you didn't give it up. Let's check us to take cuts. You didn't give it up. You shouldn't give it up. You negotiated it. I said that. I think the meeting, I think the meeting...
Second boy's talking about consolidation.
Did anybody ever work out the numbers? Did anybody work out the numbers for consolidation?
What consolidation?
He was talking about consolidation. Now look at it. You said explore it, so nobody explored it. But you throw it out there.
Sergeant Mallon.
Armon pays $4.8 million. They get two cars a shift if they're lucky. Two cars a shift. Okay? We have 40 people, 38 people now, 37 people, and we're paying the same amount of money, $5 million. So you're not gonna have a savings. You will not have a savings. There is no savings there. But you gotta look at that before you shoot your mouth off.
Mr. Mallon, he is a resident of the village who made a statement.
And I'm disagreeing with the statement. And I'm disagreeing with the statement. Okay? He also sent an email out that I gotta hold up. Okay? Somebody, he sent an email out.
Excuse me, Mr. Chudy.
You don't wanna hear what I'm about to say?
Sergeant Mallon. Sergeant Mallon? Excuse me?
There was an email out...
Please address the board openly, Mr. Chudy.
Okay. There was an email out that Mr. Chudy sent, and the email actually said how to break the unions. By threatening with Title IX, by threatening with this. I'll get you a copy of it. I know. But it was a blueprint on how to break the unions. Okay? And then he says, "I'm a union guy." I showed it to New York City Union. They didn't like it. Okay? They didn't appreciate it. But he was a delegate. But I just wanna show what people are now. As far as the water rates. I have a letter here from 1989. Dear Mr. Genatino, In my capacity as village attorney, I've been surprised at the very serious situation at your property. 1989, yeah, you failed to hook up your water.
Can you hold up a minute?
Shh. That's what it says here.
Mr. Genatino, there's someone speaking.
But I have to hear how he can say.
And you'll have your say.
Maybe if you hooked up the water, we wouldn't be in this bad a shape. I have the letter here. I'm not making it up. I have the letter here. I'm not making it up, all right? Yeah. Well, you should pay your woe. Okay. All right, now, yeah, that's fine. Now, I feel sorry for the people of Squires Gate. I know you guys were all upset about the buyout thing. I lived in Squires Gate. I moved up here. That's where I come from, Squires Gate. I lived there for like 15 years in my youth, all right? I feel bad. I really do. I think you deserve better. Okay? But I wish you deserved better. You deserve better. You deserve better. I've been hearing this since I was a kid, since I moved up here. Since I moved up here, the Army Corps of Engineers is coming in. This one's coming in. That one's coming in. Don't buy all this stuff. It's all political right now, okay?
Sergeant Mallon, the tape is broke right now, so can you just hold on one second? I'm sorry. They're repairing the tape.
I know you're upset. Oh, sorry.
Okay, it's working. Go ahead, Mr. Sergeant.
Okay, I know you're upset, but you can't buy a bill of goods just because this politician tells you that. I've been hearing this for... I'm 59 years old. I've been here since I'm 10. I've been hearing it, all right? I spent 10 to 12 years down there.
Okay. Shh.
What's that?
Excuse me, sir. I will give...
No, he mentioned consolidation, so I had to respond to it. I'm the PBA president.
He said explore.
Okay.
Explore. I don't think you should explore it. Okay? I think you get, and if when you do, you're gonna find out that you're saving money.
Are we addressing the board?
Okay. Sergeant Mallon, please address the board and please...
Okay, I just wanted to address Mr. Chudy, really, his comments.
There's no, please, there needs to be order here. I will, I have always and will always give every resident a chance to speak. Okay? We will now hear from Mr. Mallon, who will address the board, and then anyone who would like to speak afterwards. We will take your comments, okay?
Okay, I'm a little mixed up before. One was a restructuring board, right? Is that what you turned down? And one was a financial review, which everybody agreed to.
That's correct.
It's two separate boards, two separate things.
It's correct.
All right. Because a restructuring board really puts pressure on the village or the town to consolidate.
It's not a restructuring board.
It's not?
No.
I'm asking.
Financial... There is nothing in there that says restructuring. It's a Financial Review Board.
I'm trying to get it straight myself.
Well, I'm making it straight for you now. I'll email you the site. You can go on it and look and read it, and you'll see what Ed and I have said is the honest-to-god truth.
Okay, well, what did we agree to? The review board we're doing now, what is that?
Now, let's talk the budget.
This is not a review board. The comptroller is auditing the proposed budget, looking to see if it's a sound budget. That's all he's doing. Got a microphone, smart?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, in lieu of it getting very warm in here, I'm going to take five minutes for everyone to regroup. We will come back in five minutes, and we will continue the meeting. I hope we will all take this five minutes to realize that we're all here for the same common goal. Okay, we are going to resume the board meeting. Okay, can we close the doors in the back, please? Mike Carley would... Oh, thank you, Chris. Okay. I would just like to make a few comments before we resume. This is our village. This is the place that we have raised our children. We have invested every penny we have made into our homes. We are all here for the same reason. Everyone has an opinion. Everybody is entitled to voice their opinion. We are adults. We must sometimes agree to disagree. So please let us restore order back into this boardroom. Remember why we're here, and let us continue the hearings that we're all here for tonight in orderly fashion. Thank you. Mr. Genatino?
We're on the budget hearing.
We are still on the budget hearing. We are continuing the budget hearing after a five-minute... Everybody cool off, including this room that got very warm. I will put on the air. Hopefully, things will cool down as well as the tempers.
Okay, as you know, I look at the budget of the year.
Yes.
I'm looking at page 5 of the budget, where it lists all the different departments and their projected budgets for the year. There is basically only one department that has a cut in their budget in this whole village. And it's a substantial cut. It's 14.8%. Now, I would assume that if a person made that sacrifice and the hard work to come up with a cut, that the powers that be would have held the other departments to similar cuts. But I don't see that. I see increases anywhere from 11.8%, I mean, I congratulate that manager that she was able to come up with a cut. I just think that whatever method that was used, and I don't, you know, I know how it goes. I know you forgot the budget papers to the managers. But when these budgets came back and we knew the devastating financial situation that we're in, you gotta sit down and tell them you gotta do better than this. They're not all fixed costs. There is always room to cut something. I don't expect anybody to lay off two people or anything like that. But there's money to cut. Let's go to page 9. Board of Trustees. Contractual Expenses. $64,500. Now, I'm assuming that the $48,000 number was in there that is being thrown out. The trustees agreed to do without that attorney. Am I correct, trustees?
Yes.
No, we did not have a formal withdrawal of that.
Not a formal withdrawal, but it was discussed that the $48,000 that was initially entered into the budget will be removed for the hiring of outside counsel, which was specifically related to the purchase of United Water, the sale of water.
Mr. Markonis, so who was that discussion made with? Because I'm not privy to that.
I discussed it with a few members of the board.
Oh, okay. And you didn't feel it was important from the mayor of this village?
No, tonight, I guess we're going to discuss a time. Nor did the mayor of the village discuss the budget process and the worksheets that went out, and we were not made aware of the budget.
I'm sorry, Mr. Markonis, but you were given by the village clerk the process, the timeline, and I have several emails going back and forth between myself and the trustees with regards to meeting with the department heads and going over their budget worksheets.
Yes, you are correct, but we were not made aware of the outrageous increase.
Okay. After you met with the department heads, did you make any recommendations to the village treasurer as regards to cutting any of those budget sheets or cutting any, making any cuts or making any suggestions?
I've discussed, I've sat with Mr. Genito roughly three or four times, emailed him also, and telephone conversations.
Okay, again, was there any suggestions made that we could have included before the 22.8% was given to the public of ways to cut back on the budget?
Specific, no, general. General, yes.
There was no specific suggestions that he could have implemented in the budget. Is that correct?
Well...
Can I clarify that a little bit?
Yes. I will. Mr. Markonis, let me finish with Mr. Markonis. I'm just trying to get a clear sense if in fact I was given information by the board of trustees that would have helped in bringing down the increase of the budget prior to the tentative budget being released to the public. Were any of those recommendations made to Mr. Genito Were any of those recommendations made to Mr. Giannito that could have been put into the budget to reduce the 22.8 percent?
I'm not sure. Not your specific, no.
Okay, well, this is a pretty important issue.
No, I know it is.
So I think that...
And we should have been made aware of it.
And you were. You just admitted that you were made aware of it.
The increases?
Yes, you saw all the budget worksheets, Mr. Markonis, as I did.
You saw them before I did. Put it that way.
No, Mr. Markonis, when I met...
You worked, you worked, you worked.
Let's keep it civil.
I'm not going to get into a match with you, but it's, it's your responsibility, as you have pointed out to me several times, to make sure that you get all the information that you need, knowing the timeline of the budget process and that tentative budget was going to be presented to this village.
And that's what I am currently and continually working on.
Very good, I'm glad to hear that. That's, that's a wonderful thing for this village.
Thank you.
Mr. Giannatino.
Okay, you guys are done?
Thank you.
During that discussion, it seems to me that none of the trustees were included in discussions between the treasurer and yourself, am I correct?
Uh, the treasurer and I did not have meetings with just the two of us. We had meetings with the department heads, and that is the same thing that I encourage the board members to do as well.
Wouldn't it be better to have had one trustee, say at one department, and another trustee? This way, everyone would have known what was coming down with the 22.8 percent increase and they wouldn't have got shocked when the budget was presented by the village clerk with a 22.8 percent increase. Maybe we could have worked some of these things out before this meeting and before the tentative.
If it was included in some of the discussion that Mr. Markonis has told us he's had with the other trustees, there could have been a possibility of that happening. You're absolutely correct.
I was in discussion with you in your office, mayor, and you were, you were not even able to divulge the increase to me. You were so taken back by the increase.
I was taken back.
Which he had, the mayor had to write the figure down on a piece of paper and push it over to me.
That's how it started.
Come on now, this is not working together. I've tried, I've been in that office, you know it, and every time I'm in there, I'm speaking to you about the budget. I spoke to Mr. Giannito, I've been in that village all the way this time.
We can go back and forth, and this, this is not about us, this is about our residents and our village.
Okay, let me continue.
Please.
So there's, there's this figure of $64,500. Can somebody in God's green earth tell me why the trustees would need contractual amount of $64,500?
$48,000 is the aforementioned attorney. The, most of the remainder of it is for planners and other experts that the board has hired in the past to review various planning and zoning type issues, not, not this board.
No, he said in the past. My question is, last year under contractual for trustees, there was $1,000. Now we have 48, which is gone, or gonna be gone, and that leaves us with what? $22,250? Since when does the board of trustees hire planners? Planners come through the planning board or the zoning board. So why is it in their line? And I think it should just go away, period. So that's $64,500 that's gone, as far as I'm concerned. Whatever you do is your business. Under the mayor, we have $4,500 in contractual. Elected officials aren't supposed to get health benefits. What's that number for?
That I believe is the mileage for the car.
That's even worse. We're paying $4,500 in mileage when we have cars sitting all over this lot that can be used, that we own, and we have a gas pump that we can put gas in, and we're paying $4,500. Where are we going for, this is a two-mile square village. Where are we going? Just another question. So that was 64, and four is 68,750. This is one page. Let's go to another page. Contractual expenses under the village attorney. Last year was $12,250. This year it's $27,150. I don't know, tell me.
That's outside counsel for labor and other issues.
So we're hiring attorneys, outside attorneys, which was a bugger bill for the water, but that's beside the point because that's gone. We have an attorney that's been here for 30 years, if I'm wrong correctly, Terry, but I think it's 30. He's handled labor items before. He's handled all kinds of other cases for this village. Why are we hiring outside attorneys?
Mr. Giannatino, we have had labor counsel for this village for many, many years.
Not when I was here. I negotiated a police contract, and I don't think anybody here will complain about the contract they got.
Would they complain about the CSEA contract and the money that it cost the village for that? I think so. It's, it's, it was much more beneficial for this village to have a labor counsel attorney to negotiate all contracts, and that's something that has worked well for this village since you have been mayor.
Well, I still say preliminary negotiations, you do not need a labor attorney. When you come to some sort of agreement or close to an agreement, then you can bring in your outside attorney with $200,000 out.
And that's exactly the way we use, use the attorney. We do not do it for preliminary. We bring them in when we're close to an agreement, and we also use him for grievances from, from the employees.
Have we had many grievances?
Yes, we have.
I don't know why we would, but that's another story. Special item, same page. Contingency, excuse me, contingency account last year, $30,000, $60,000 this year. Fit 100% increase. What causes 100% increase? I feel bad for you, Mayor. I thought maybe the mayor would answer something and give you a break.
It's the Giannatino exercise program.
I can use it too.
Actually, if you look at the actual amount spent in 2014, or the actual amount in that account was $106,000. So $30,000 was a little bit too low.
This is your actual?
Yeah, well, 2014 actual. That's for fiscal year 2014. So you see that that number is 106,000. $30,000 in the 2015 budget was probably okay, but if you look at that as a percentage of a total budget, it's not really that large. $60,000 was between the 30 and the 106.
So that was another case of underestimating expenses and overestimating revenues. Contractual expenses for the fire department, $327,750 last year, $379,110 this year. We bought a fire truck last year, right? We're not buying another one, are we? I don't know, I'm asking. I guess there's no explanation for that increase. And I'm only gonna do a few. I could keep you here all night into tomorrow morning, okay? But you don't wanna do that, neither do I. Thank you, Al. Page 27, excuse me. Okay, we're transitioning from a parking authority to a parking department. So it seems that the parking department is going to have three parking people that walk around, which is what you had. It's gonna have supposedly a full-time clerk for $48,728. It's gonna have a part-time clerk for $12,578, and a clerk typist for $24,364. Now, my understanding is it went to the police department. Why do we need all these clerks? We need one clerk to take care of clerical work. We need a full-time person in the parking authority that the police department is overseeing? So that's 48, 24, and 12. It's a few bucks. $48,728 in that neighborhood? Add it up. It's a couple of percent on your budget. That's what it is. There are other things in this budget, and I really don't like to get into personal identification of people, but there are some positions on the second floor where we have duplicate people with part-time positions. Some of them only work at night. In fact, if I'm correct, they both work at night, which means there's no one here during the day. And if we can survive with no one here during the day, why do we need two people at night? Our building inspector, I mean...
Mr. Giannatino, it would be very hard for us to understand what you're talking about and when you talk.
Okay.
So if you're going to bring up something...
Okay, there's two code enforcers, two part-time code enforcers. Do we need two part-time code enforcers?
First of all, they do not work both at night. They work whatever time they're needed to go out on specific calls of complaints. That can happen daytime, nighttime.
Don't they both have full-time day jobs?
Uh, they both work it out so that someone is available during the day and someone is available in the evening.
That wasn't my question. My question was, don't they have full-time day jobs?
I don't know what they're, they're working.
I think you do, but that's another theory.
Okay, well, Mr. Giannatino, I just told you, I'm not, I'm not...
Okay, well, maybe we should find out.
I don't need to know. What I need to know is that they're doing the job that needs to be done in this village, and that I'm satisfied.
That could be debatable if you ask some people with code enforcement programs.
Okay.
Okay, and as far as building inspectors, do we need two building inspectors? Right now, there's nothing being built. Hasn't been anything built, maybe a couple of private houses on his side. You know, we're looking to save money, at least I'm looking to save money, I don't know about anybody else. These are options that haven't even been looked at.
Mr. Giannatino, again, you're making generalized statements for the board and you don't know that.
Well, you brought up the things that you identified tonight. None of them are on that list.
Okay, so you're directing this comment towards me, or, or you...
Well, you're the only one that brought up the reduction from 22.
I think I've come up with some, some good plans, I'm not...
Yes, you did. You come up with some good, it's a great start.
And I'm not done yet.
I certainly hope not. And I'm sure the trustees have some that they'd like to come up with too, but they don't get to speak till after everyone else speaks.
I'm sure that you, you know that, I do.
Well, I think I've identified some monies here.
Thank you.
Probably, where did you knock it down? 4%? We might have another 3% here. So now we're at 7, and let's see where we go from here, because this village should not be, these taxpayers should not be burdened with an 18% tax increase or a 22% tax increase. I don't think anything more than 9% and even that's a stretch is acceptable to the majority of people that are paying these taxes. I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Trudy, Mr. Trudy, could we...
I want to offer an apology. I wanna, that's why I'm coming up. I wanna apologize to the mayor, I wanna apologize to the board, I would like to apologize to the people here, and especially the Suffolk Police Department. At no time did I mean to be disrespectful, and I apologize if it seemed, it came across that I was. I apologize for my actions up here with another police officer. That's the worst thing I could ever do, is have another argument with a police officer. I have the highest regard and higher suspect for all police officers. And I wanna make one thing perfectly clear. When I said a 10% deficit or, or, or cut in pay, I did not mean the police department. So I think something might have been misconstrued on that. No way. All I wanted to do was say, everything should be on a, should be looked at, everything, whether it's consolidation or whatever, it should just be looked at. I'm not saying if the numbers show one way or the other, that's how our village should go. But in no way, in no how would I ever defame a police officer or a police department. I just wanna make that clear to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trudy.
Finally. Good evening, mayor and members of the board. My name's Daniel Parker, I live at Five Foxwood Avenue in Suffolk, here for quite, how's that? Quite a few years. I didn't have ample opportunity to review the 37-page report that was generated by Mr. Giannatino. It was a very thorough report. I picked up a few graphs and pie charts. And first, before I get into this, I just wanna say something about the village and the community. We have young people moving into what is their dream? To own a home, to raise their children, to live in a community where they feel safe. Unfortunately, the way things are going, we are giving them a second thought about living here, raising a family, contributing to the community, contributing to the tax base, because your tax base is disappearing. Looking, looking at these charts, I don't see how you can sustain even, with the 22% that you are asking us for, which we're not gonna give you. It's that simple. We're just not gonna give it up. Finally, we have, we have town worker, uh, village workers here, we have the police department here. Sure, everybody's gonna be looking for their own, their own pie in the sky, if you will. I wanna protect my job too, but I have an obligation to my constituents, my colleagues, to do what's right. And I believe what I'm doing up here is the right thing, and that's just speaking my mind. I'm willing to protect my community and my neighbors, and this is part of that protection. And what we're doing here is unconscionable. This is something that is not right. It is something that cannot be sustained. Again, looking at these charts, and I have a little bit of background in finance, although I have people that do this stuff for me, and if I don't know something, I ask them. I'm that smart enough to ask them if I don't know. But I mean, I'm looking at the, now, I'm looking at a pie chart, this is 100% of the budget that I'm looking at here. I'm looking at 37.2% for public safety of 100% of the budget. 37.2%. This is nobody's fault. This is just economics. This is just the way things work. What goes down? The tolls go down on the bridge, don't we tell me? Tolls go down on the bridge? No, there's no problems in the road.
Parker, can you just stay close to the mic, because there's some people...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Now I'm looking at the employee benefits, 31% of 100% of the budget of the village. You can ask us for, I don't care for, you know, 22%, you cannot stay on this track. It's impossible, fiscally impossible to continue along here. We're fooling ourselves. This village, honestly, folks, ladies and gentlemen, has seen better days. If you look at this report, this very well documented, thought-out, written report, the numbers don't lie, they are what they are. I don't care if it was $64,000, it won't change a nothing. It's not gonna change anything for any of you. I understand, we have jobs, we have careers, we have benefits, we have salary. That's great, but I'll be damned if I'm gonna let the village Titanic take down the lifeboats. It's just not gonna happen. Can't allow it to happen. So with that being said, I can't say anything more, but this is, this is really outrageous. You know, I hear people up here pontificating about, why didn't we hire this guy, or do that, or get rid of this, or cut over here. It's more than that. This is very serious financial issues. I've looked at the state controllers report. I'd be damned if I can find Suffolk in there. Are they in now? Because we require it to file, and I don't see a report. And I looked for, for, I think, a number of years. So we're in deep trouble. And employees and anyone else here better wake up and face reality, because you can't come to us, 2.10 square miles of village, maybe 13, Clark, 13,000 residents? 12, 13,000 residents. Where's the money? Where's the money? Where, where? We're all paying through the nose. School tax, you wanna talk about school tax? What, about $7,000? Oh, school tax, outrageous.
The principal of Suffolk High School is making $275,000. Plus he's collecting a pension from Suffolk County.
But this is, this is no one's, it honestly is no one's fault. It's just a matter of taking fiscal responsibility and hard choices. That's what it takes. Nobody's gonna like it. Nobody likes to be on the short end, but guess what? If you're gonna save the 10 people here, then it's worth to sacrifice the one. That's how it has to be. We just can't throw the baby out with the bathwater. But looking at this, I'm sorry to say, this is, we're fooling ourselves. You're not gonna make it. That's it. And you can't come to me and ask me for $60 a month more to pay, hoping that we're gonna reach some, you know, some fiscal responsibility. It's just not gonna happen. As time goes on, so does cost. It's inevitable. It's just the way it is. And that's the way I see it, and I hope, I hope people see it that way as well. And, and another note, you know, I don't plan to be here much longer simply because I'm being taxed out. I refuse to give my business to New York, any, any further money to the state of New York. I don't wanna do anything here. It's just a big money grab. There's a better life in other parts of the country than this place, that's for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
How you doing? Mike Sanford, 10 Interstate Street. I just wanted to clear up a couple of things. You guys said before there was no restructuring in name of the Financial Restructuring Board. That's the name of it. Just, just to clear it off. I really want to look it up, it's the frb.gov New York. So that is the name, is the Restructuring Board. The other thing I wanted to touch on is... The other thing I wanted to touch on is, you know, some of this consolidation, the police department issues. You know, I've had a lot of experience in this. I'm retired from Suffolk. I've worked a lot of other towns and villages also. It was good experience. I think there's some misinformation out there about Slotsburg and some other villages. Slotsburg did get rid of the police department. I'm not going to comment, you know, whether they're happy or not. That's up to them. But I do know that you could see in public on some newspaper articles, they were looking to hire their own constable. And that was in the past couple of years. Because they wanted some speed enforcement on their streets. And they weren't getting it. And this is, I'm not here at all to bash the town around the police department. They're a great department. It's not about them. It's what they can do with the money they have. Okay? The village of Havishaw consolidated the town Havishaw Police Department. Once the initial contract is up, the village of Havishaw's tax rates are much higher than they will when they have their own police department and their crime rates are through the roof. Just something to think about. You know, these things seem all great. Start looking at the numbers and realizing that it's not that great. Village of Warwick, Town of Warwick, same thing. Village of Warwick, crime rate's been up. They lost their village department. It's a lot different when it's in your department or it's in your village. My other concerns is this, you know, like I said, I just can't imagine us... I've said it before at other meetings, I can't imagine getting into more, into bed any further with the town of Ramapo. You know, they have their own financial issues. And you can't tell me that for the same amount of money, what we get for our police is what Airmont's got. Because I lived in Airmont. And me and my wife moved to Suffolk because of what we have here. And it's superb. You know, you can live on... If anyone lives on Lexington Ave., if you call the town of PD, if they were there and say, "Speeders every day. I have the school buses." No fault to them, they're not going to pull resources from Hillcrest, Chestnut Ridge, or Muncie because we're the village of Suffolk and send us anybody. I could tell you who will. I know anybody here calls Clark Alston. He's going to have somebody over there. I think everybody knows that. I'm with you on saving money. Listen, I'm with it. I just think there's certain things you gotta think it through a little bit before you want to go ahead with it. I just think we really should be looking for independence from the town of Ramapo. Financial independence, keeping our money here from them. That's the direction. I know it's not easy. I know it could happen today. But I just can't imagine, you know, we're talking about giving them more money. It's not about the PD. It's not about the personalities. It's about you and I all know the supervisor of the town board. They're not going to take our money and sink it back into this village. No way. Not for any of our services. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa. I'm not going to say my name or my address, but I do live in a village, just for reasons. I just wanted to speak about recreation first and foremost. I have a little boy, just the first of my whole family. And a lot of people are all saying, "We need to cut back on recreation. We need to get rid of it." I'm really upset with that. Because you all had us growing up, our children, and we had things to do. We had things to keep us busy. We had places to go to stay safe. One of them being the dare program, or the community center, or the Easter egg hunt, or just a lot of different things going on, the Suffolk Pool. These kept us out of trouble. And if you look at what's going on right now, the amount of heroin addictions going on in our high schools, the marijuana, the drugs, everything, it is all there and it's happening, whether you want to believe it or not. And if you get rid of these programs that our children are going to be invested in, starting at four, five years old, what's going to happen in 10, 15 years? I know I don't want my son getting into something that's going to get him into trouble. So he starts T-ball this coming weekend and I am so excited. What happens if we get rid of that? I don't want him going to Ramapo because then he's going to be lost. Ramapo, again, they have a great department. They have a lot of stuff going on. But I agree with him. I don't want anything to do with Ramapo. Because the second we let them in our door, they are going to take over. And then we're going to all be crying even more. Now, I want to be here another 25, 30, 45 years. We are the younger generation. And speaking for the younger generation, I understand you have to sometimes spend a little bit more money. Because guess what? It's 2015. It's not 2000. It's not 1995 anymore. Prices on everything are going up. I just switched from Verizon to Sprint because their prices are going up. But that's what happens. Prices go up. Now, they're not saying that the taxes are going to be 22.8%. They're not saying that is definite. They are saying, "Let's open the door and start looking into what our options are." Okay? We are all working hard. I work my butt off. I have my degree. I'm trying to pay off my student loans. And I'm not looking anywhere near enough money to pay those off. And you guys, why do you don't have to deal with that? But we do. Our generation does. And I have to prepare for my son for college. So I understand money. Believe me, I get it. But that's even more of a reason why I want to stay in the village of Suffolk, where I know that if I need a police officer at my door, or if I have a fire going on, that I know they're going to be there within under a minute. And not only that, look at the hit and runs we've been having. Look at the three cars that got someone in Mala out of their driveways. Literally, under... Right out of our back doors. Okay? So the whole consolidation thing, we need to really evaluate that. I enjoy our water. I enjoy our sewer. I enjoy knowing that we have guys that we work with and live with and see on a regular basis that I know they're taking care of us because they live here. What happens if Ramapo takes over? Or a water company takes over that's bigger? What's going to happen? We don't know. At least we know if we keep it in the village of Suffolk, that we have some kind of control. Because our votes do count. So keep it here. Let's see what happens. This is not a definite answer, but this is saying, "Let's go from here. Let's see where it goes." Recreation is important to me. I want to make sure my son grows up in a village such as Suffolk, the reason why I'm here. And I don't plan on moving upstate or anywhere else. I want to stay here. And I know that with some teamwork between the board, because we see that some problems are happening there, and I really hope they resolve those issues and start communicating, that we as a whole village can work on this. And that's coming from the younger generation. Because everybody else can speak on that. But I am the younger generation. That is starting family in this village. That's it.
Michael Curling, for Orange Avenue, Suffolk, New York. Just looking... I mean, I got over the budget. Looking at the budget, you go over the years and people have analyzed it in the state. There was no money stolen from anywhere. Nobody misappropriated funds. Nobody stole a dollar. Okay? Just looking back, everybody tried to go under that super 2% tax cap. As a gentleman mentioned here, it doesn't work. All right? It doesn't work in the formulas of trying to provide services and at the same time, at least staying under the 2% tax cap. The only way you can accomplish that mission is consolidation. But it's not consolidation of us going into the town of Ramapo, where I feel comfortable in saying there will be indictments coming down soon. All right? It's consolidation in the fact that we need to, as Suffolk, take our services and make someone else help us pay for those services. At the same time then, not increasing our employment ranks and our benefit costs. And we then can consolidate by making Suffolk the key. There are many areas around us that are looking to get away from Ramapo because they do not trust Ramapo. All right? And as time goes on, Ramapo says they do a bait and switch. "We'll charge you a million, and then before you know it, you're up to $4 million." Okay? Well, we can actually provide those services at a cheaper rate. At the same time, it's cheaper taxes for us. Okay? It's not an answer. You have to work on it. It's a plan. And this is something over time. And that was, you know, where someone had come up with the idea, as I sat here, with making the village of Suffolk a city. Because it's easier to attain those things than it's a... No, there's work and process. And it's not my idea, so I'm not trying to take credit for that either. Okay? But just, nobody robbed anyone. No one in any administration here robbed anyone. Okay? They probably should have said, "You know, we were hopeful." All right? Water usage went down immensely. All right? And because it went down immensely, it cost us more than over time. Okay? And as I mentioned, we're going to have a problem with Navarre there. Okay? I went to a workshop the other day. I was waiting to hear, you know, everyone's ideas here. Okay? I went there, waited to hear what whoever had to say, "This is what I'm cutting." Or "This is how I'm doing it." You don't have to wait. Nobody, like Mr. Giannatino, says they get their chance at the end of the meeting. These people came. They have to get home. You don't have to wait to the end of the meeting. Tell what you want to cut. Tell how you want to save. The mayor just came up with about at least 4%, 5%, whatever exactly it comes to. We want you to work together. Not more off. Okay? But for us to go ahead and say to ourselves here, "We're not going over 2%," is a ridiculous statement. Okay? There are contractual agreements between employees that we cannot break. We can break them if we want to try, and we'll be in court and the cost is three times as much. Okay? We talk about Ramapo. Suffolk Police got a raise of about 2.7%. Ramapo Police got a 4% raise. Okay? So if you want to see really what the cost will be in time, go look and see who gets paid, what, when, and where. All right? That's just one simple fact there. I can go back... Now, if you want to go back and look into what they got in their benefits, you're really going to be amazing in Ramapo. All right? So that idea, you can talk it, but it's a fuller story to talk. Okay? Consolidation, I agree with, but we're the king. They come to us. Okay? And we give them fair service and we share our costs. Other villages are trying to get away from Ramapo. Why believe it? Consider trying to go to them. We'd be a real sucker. All right? But... All right, I don't want to bother you no more, alumni. God bless.
Richard Gannon, 45 Somerset Drive, Suffolk. First of all, the Financial Restructuring Board, if you read it, if you accept their recommendations, you are bound by those recommendations. So that's a misnomer.
I beg your pardon?
If you accept their recommendations...
The Financial Review Board, if you read it...
It's the fiscal review. It's a financial restructuring, not review. It's restructuring.
We're not talking about restructuring.
No, that's what you proposed a few months, a few weeks ago.
He gave you suggestions on restructuring.
Excuse me, Mr. Morris.
Excuse me. That's what you put forth a motion on a couple of months ago.
Again, if you read it, I think you'll have a better...
If you read it...
I did read it.
Mr. Giannatino will probably agree with me. If you accept the recommendations, you are bound by them. Is that correct?
Yes.
So what really troubles me is without fully understanding what you're voting on, you potentially put... I'm not done talking. I'm not done talking. You're getting your chance. If you don't read and understand it...
Mr. Morris, okay.
Mr. Talk to Mr. Giannatino. I think he knows a little bit more about these things than any of us.
All right, go ahead.
But what you're potentially doing is you're jeopardizing the residents and employees of a full-service village by not understanding what you're putting forth. All I'm asking is, you know, you've got an expert right here. Talk to the man. Talk to the man. I mean, if you want to go there, last meeting, I was wrong about the $48,000 without attorney. He told me that. Mr. Mark Kunis has told us all that I was right.
And I said that was a network.
Okay, that's fine. So let's move on. So Mr. Giannatino came up with, what was it, 7% worth of reductions?
About 4 or 5.
Okay, 4 or 5 plus the 4 or 5 we've already got. What are we down to? 17, 18%?
No, 14.
14. Okay, 14%. Great. You know, we've already agreed that we're not going to exceed the 2% tax cap. I wonder where the rest of the cuts are coming from. It's at a 12% worth of cuts. I mean, are we going to cut recreation to families? Are we going to cut recreation to senior citizens? I mean, they're in there working out all the time. You know, I mean, we just had a bus trip. I mean, we do a lot for the seniors here as well, and they've earned it. You know, let's talk about the police department. We've spent about $5 million on our police department. Airmont spends $4.8 million. They get 1.5 to two officers per shift. Those numbers did not come from the brass. They came from the guys that are actually on the street working. I know for a fact, Hillburn has had Suffolk show up to help them out before Ramapo gets there. Nothing against the guys that are out there. You know, what it really comes down to is response times. We've got the people. We're paying for public safety. And somebody pointed out, you know, 37 or whatever percent it was for public safety. I think it's a bargain. You know, something else you probably don't understand about the Ramapo Police Department is, God forbid, you need a SWAT team. Who's coming? Who's showing up? Oh, they'll show up. The county will show up. Do you understand that they don't have a SWAT team? We do. They're going to get a bill. If we have a situation like that where we need a react team, we're getting the bill. You know what we pay for that? We have Rick Marsh who's on the react team. People don't understand that. You know, we've had some drug arrests in this village through the Rockland County Drug Task Force. Guess what? Ramapo isn't a part of that anymore. They don't have one. You know, and Teresa brought up, you know, we have heroin, we have drugs all over the place, prescription medications. You know, we have those guys and they do a great job. And what I really want to know, and I'm not trying to pick on you, Mr. Morris, but what I really want to know is where the rest of the cut's going to come from. Or do we bite the bullet and come up with a fair proposal? Some sort of, you know, we negotiate something where we can maintain a full-service village? Nothing on the cuts? Have they been considered? We have 12%. We got a cut based on the votes tonight. Anyone? Anyone? Bueller?
I gave you what I've come up with to gate.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Hold up. I think I'm going to turn this over.
Hang on one second. We're just changing tapes. Give me one minute. Thank you. So wait, we're changing in the back too.
Go ahead.
Hang on.
It's okay.
No, no, Elaine's changing.
Our Elaine's changing.
Forgot where we left off.
We're still on the budget?
We're still on the budget.
Oh, my goodness.
No, wait, though. We did fire department. We did culture and recreation. We did village attorney. We've got to do police department. I have to do code enforcement too. Steve wants to give that... No, Steve wants to give that report.
Okay, you're on.
Alan De Ambrosio again, 4 Court Street, Suffolk, New York. It's interesting that we do hear these constant requests for more programs. Some are federal, some are state, some are local, and some are dealing with our youth. And some of them are constructive. But I said something earlier, and I think different people actually have, in a way, said it as well. If you're going to cut back, some of it, some part of it, dealing with your youth, dealing with your libraries, dealing with your structures that can have an additional part put onto it for the community, have to be stopped. I stopped contributing to my library. They had a thing there for voting. They needed something like 40 or 60,000 for the year, and then they wanted to make it triple that, I think. I may be wrong, but triple that. And it was including Slotsburg, this, this, and that. That was going to be tax money, I imagine. And I said, "No." It was a private vote. Now I'm being public. I'm sorry, but it's got to be said. Either you're going to stop spending, cut back on programs, or you're going to go bankrupt. Our government is bankrupt. You want to do the same damn thing? You got to cut it now. You have a problem, you have a thing being built someplace in the quarry where they're saying, "Well, we have to use..." They're going to do rent. So they had a special deal where they may not be paying profits to the town for an amount of years. But that water, mind you, that's interesting. That water's being used more and more. Whoever's saying it's not, that's hooey. How can it not be used? You have new whole condos built here, there, everywhere. They're all using it. And it will go down. Sure, you'll have moments it goes up. And there are merits in some of the case when you said you have an excess, you could sell it. There are merits in that point. But the other side of the coin is, if you have something, you better keep it. But two, if you have a board up here from the highest issue on down, you've got to have that level of where you say restraint. Because money's worth a penny now, you're going to say, "It's okay. I'll still keep printing it and doing it." No, because you're going to need more and more and more. If you can't teach your kids about drugs, and if you have to take out the guy who's doing it, if you can't do it, then of course, our lawmen will. But if you can solve the damn problem somewhat, you should do it. And that's what your job is, to lower these requests for more and more money. Interest is out of sight, here and in every other respect. We spend money, yeah, we're going to lose our town. It do happen. More and more will go. And then what? Oh, Slotsburg, I remember. That was like Doodle Town. Which is in existence... Oh, it's not existent anymore. It's gone. So that's the worry. But you have to stop spending any way you can. Cut back our benefits. Cut back your own benefits. I was dropped from AIG years ago. What was I earning? 40-some-what thousand a year. Hey, what's this new guy getting there hiring for the... Here, 40-some-what, just hiring from scratch. I worked there 33 years. If I could be let go and total go to hell? Well, I'm sorry. Don't hire someone... If I could be let go and total go to hell, well, I'm sorry, don't hire so many people. Thank you, guys.
As always, my friend Al is a tough act to follow. Ladies and gentlemen, 3 Simon 31 Utopian Avenue. I just wanted to say something, I'm not gonna get into specific departments or dollars or anything. I think there's a general perception that needs to be corrected. There is a budget timeline. From the mayor, through the trustees, all the department heads know every step of the way what that budget timeline is, they know every piece of paper that's moved around. There is nothing that stops anyone, anybody on that board from getting involved in the budget process from day one. I'm sorry, Jim?
No, it's open to myself.
If anybody tells you that they were excluded from a process, that they were not allowed to be involved in the process, that they were kept in the dark about the process, the word I used online is the word I'll use today, that's absurd. Any one of them could have been involved in the process at any point in the process. So maybe the better question to ask is, how many of them have been involved in the process? What have they done to date to make that 22% number better? I'm not pointing a finger at anybody. Last month didn't go well, and just as my friend, Mr. Schuetti apologized for his behavior before, I will apologize for my behavior last month. I should not have raised my voice, I should not have done what I did. Judge Byrne, I apologize for speaking about you the way I did. I was wrong, and I accept that. And I hope you will accept my apology. But it is true that anybody here could be part of this process at any point. I'd like to know, and I guess we will find out towards the end of the meeting, I would like to know what they have done, who besides the mayor has met with department heads, what numbers have they come up that are different, that would be better, that would be more palatable to the people here and to the residents of the village?
Patsy Rogers, 19 Mansfield Place. I was under the impression that there would be a public comment period. I have some information which is actually good news for the village, and so I'm gonna take it upon myself to just give the good news. As Mr. Mark Kulis knows...
Patsy, there's going to be audience participation.
Pardon?
There's going to be an audience participation.
Oh, alright, then I'll make my other point that I wanted to make, which is, several years ago, I was nominated to get a scholarship to attend the Pace Law School land use, it's a four-day course for public servants and people who are on planning boards and busybodies like me. And the person who ran it at the time was a man named John Nolan, and he made a point. He said that residential taxpayers, on average, get $1.27 for every dollar in taxes that they pay. So ladies and gentlemen, when we look in the mirror, we're looking at the problem. We can't have it all.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, once again. Before I get to my point, I'd like to clear up a little things people don't realize. Yes, it is true that the board and the mayor can be involved in the budget process at any given time, and they should be. And they've always been encouraged by myself, and I'm sure Mr. Genito has encouraged them. But what's not understood is that when they do get involved and they get the budget worksheets and so on, what they're really seeing is what the dollar number is that's being requested, what was last year, what was the year before. They don't have the whole picture, which is this 22% number, in front of them. So when they look at it and they see, okay, you know, this is gonna go up a few dollars, several thousand dollars, they don't have it whatsoever, and they don't realize 22%. So I just want anyone to realize that...
Mr. Zodan, I'm sorry, you weren't involved in the process this year, but Mr. Genito requested narratives from each one of the department heads with regards to their budget. So they were properly laid out and they were available to everyone on the board.
No, what I'm saying is, I agree that they have it on the pieces, but they don't have them put together and have the total budget increased. That's all I'm saying. I'm agreeing that they should be involved, and they are involved, to whatever magnitude it is.
Okay.
Okay. With that incident, so I looked at the budget, and Mr. Genito did put my work into it, but I don't know, I just want to make one comment, and that is that the money that was in last year's budget to purchase our jam was not $295,000, it was $280,000. Just want to know it so you can make that correction. There was $295,000 in sale of assets, but $280,000 was just for our jam. Okay. I'm sorry, I should have had reading glasses. Alright. Mr. Genitino talked about the parking authority. Now, I know athletes would need to dissolve the parking authority and to... He didn't take much. Assuming that has been done. Now, the parking authority itself has always been meant to generate money. And that was one of the reasons that it was brought into the village, was we kept saying, "Why shouldn't we keep any leftover money that's there?" And when it's gone down, the parking authority, they make money. Now, that we're taking it over, we're not stronger than making money, which should be same revenue as its expense. Now, in terms of technology, with the budget just to benefit the parking authority, including the expense items or depreciation, which when it's brought into the village, we don't recognize depreciation as the primary expense item in our budget. So that should be full of that some funds. In addition, we only have, there's the name for an outside consultant, and we don't have that anymore. And the numbers that are in there, it's about $20,000 a year. So since that pays a lot, that should be full of that some funds. In addition, we created an outside account to do the, according to statistics, tax returns for the mayor and for the, uh, to do the parking expenses. That should be the number of this now, and full of the money. And also, there's the unadded, there's the, now, because this is a plan of the village, we shouldn't be paying for outside added of the parking authority. So that should fill up some more of funds. And they had full-time clerks working there. Now, they're telling that they want to have a full-time clerk at 48 hours a day. I don't understand why, because we're gonna be absorbing more of the work in terms of the electric keeping and the babying, and so I don't understand why I'm upset that we're not only not cutting back on clerks, but increasing the number of clerks. So I haven't figured out what a repaid amount of additional revenue taken from the parking authority that gave the village, but I might have to say it's still not substantial. And the board, as it was constituted, could use, you know, we're going to break this all up about taking the papers in, and they're letting go, but yes, they're not even controlling this. This is a limited issue, we're having to do for the village, and they don't make money for us. But as it's constituted in the budget right now, it's not showing that the village is making any additional revenue. So I think this should be reviewed. Okay. Another one is that the board, as Mr. Genito, or Mr. Genitino, they're the ones that basically hire the planners, when someone's coming, they're gonna do something, and they hire the planners. And the rules is, we will reimburse them 100%. So what we do is, in the revenue, this payment fees, that's the number, and then the remaining expenses, contractual expenses, that should be the same offset number. We should, we give $23,000 in payment fees, we give zero in contractual expenses. The number we should be putting in, out of the papers, and now I realize that Mr. Genito, I guess, put it in to, uh, trust these contractual expenses. So I think that might be, should be moving on, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, so we're getting at a few things here. It appears that we have a 5-year lease, a five-year lease, in which if they don't buy the bill, it's supposed to be $12,000 a year. I don't see that $12,000 in the budget. We have a agreement with New York State, because we deeply dug the values for the state laws, and we get roughly $13,000 a year for 400,000. I don't see that in the budget. Okay. In terms of fuel fees, we have an actual from 2014, I think it was $46,000 or $47,000 a year. Now, this year's projected budget reduces it to $42,000. I mean, we're reducing, so it's reducing the majority, and I don't think population's really changing regards to the little families that, children, etc., that you have to pay. Additionally, we have, we did create, it's a youth court, the police department gets one, and recreation gets one, and unfortunately, it's been gone down, but it's roughly, now it's down to, I'd say about $2,500 combined. I don't see that in the budget either. Now, we have, in our budget, a police buyout, which, and the mayor's gonna say it's money, it's actually, should be saying it's money now. This year's budget is $297,000 dollars to pay off the second standards to police officers who retire. Additionally, there's $103,000 to bring for, and a crowd, and I don't think it was vacation or sick, I don't remember if they were here. Anyway, it's, comes out to about $401,000. I try to change. Well, I would suggest looking into bonding that bill, bonding that number, and setting it down. This was done in a building, it can't be broken, we need to buy out for about $300,000. I would suggest looking into bonding that, not that I like buying money, but if we can bond that, and pay it after 10 years, the way it works is that because it's in a general fund, and I can live to capital for, I don't know if it can, but since it's in a general fund, the money behind would be attributed directly to general fund, and therefore we can recognize the revenue, which would offset the expense 100% in that year. And then we would be picking up on the fund, and the principal interest says expense, and we would give $40,000 for the same insurance you live, so $50,000, and just a little bit, and we, we, it would save you $400,000 approximately. In addition, a few years ago, we settled the grant through the child's house, and we borrowed the grant, $200,000 dollars, and we made a, around $50,000 a year. Because this is a general fund, and the revenue, what it means, when we break it down, that's when we recognize the revenue. I don't see this $50,000 thing as revenue in the budget, I see it as an expense, but not a revenue, because it's supposed to be much like, because you're not supposed to restrict things, same expense twice without making any, all of a sudden, revenue. So that you have expense for us. Okay. Now, I need to, second, okay. In terms of the police department...
What you trying to...
Like everyone said, I'm truly believing in the big job. Okay. But what has happened last year with the buyout, the players retired, and they deserted their family, they were coming, they were out there, and to me, we're living, we're living, which, you know, a whole bunch of, and so the drums is, a couple of things. One is, the people that retired were getting six weeks vacation, people that had been here only got two weeks vacation. So that means all five of those new people, or six, are now providing the village with four extra weeks of work, okay? So that means they've got 20 extra weeks of shifts that are being covered. Additionally, they've been paid a lot of money. Therefore, I can't and be conscious in understanding that the reason I went over time from $150,000 to $240,000, $240,000. Then, obviously, you know, there's gonna be times where people are out sick and living on the shore, we have to call in people, but if people are getting paid less, then we shouldn't have to pay as much overtime. Additionally, because we're going, we have to have some resources instead, because we have more longer bonds, getting the bond in the new years, there's less time that people are running, running on vacation and stuff. So like I said, you have maybe a family week each, if it's five people, it's 20 weeks more a year, or if it's six, it's 24 weeks. So I don't understand why overtime, we have to go up so much. Okay. Again, we talk about fiscal management, and we have resources and everything. We, in fact, in our, our people, whether it's salaries and benefits, is a tremendous number, a tremendous percent of our budget, but that's because that's what we work for. We work for people. And on the paper, we don't produce a product that we sell, we only have our people. So it's understandable that we're, you know, such a tremendous amount of budget. Okay. Now, in years past, our DPW overtime has gone a drastic increase. This year, we're asking for a $5,000 increase. But I think we have to look at how we're using our overtime in the DPW. And I think we say, we have some, 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 that is true, we do. But when we have a budget of $70,000, $90,000, and we use $40,000 to $50,000 of that, before we have one snowflake, I think we have to look at what we're spending our overtime on. And we can't speak about running plants and cutting grass, we have to be more responsible.
Mr. Zodan, there's other people who want to talk, and it's starting to get very, very late. We've given you probably about 20 to 25 minutes of time, so could you just...
I'm wrapping it up. I'm wrapping it up.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. There's other people who would like to speak.
So what I'm suggesting here is that we reduce the police overtime on, where is it? is it? Reduce it from, instead of going up to 240, we're giving a 10% increase up to 165. And for this street department, I think if we better manage our summertime overtime, we could definitely go through the year on a $70,000 overtime budget instead of 95. Based on all these things, I'm talking about savings and additional revenue over $500,000. So.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zorhan. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yeah, he's right there.
Hi.
Adam DiStefano, 19 Perry Avenue. I promise I will be very, very short, so late night. A couple of things I just wanted to bring up. One, I really do like the hiring freeze. It's not only gonna save us money on the budget this year, it's gonna save us money in the future, which is what we're looking for. This isn't about lowering the money for one year's budget, it's about lowering the money for the next five, 10 years in the budget, and that's what we have to look for. The other thing I like is selling non-essential assets. Right now, we need money. We're strapped for cash, we have years of mismanagement and misappropriation of funds, overestimated revenues that didn't end up coming in that cost us millions, and we now need to make that money up. And we have to start selling some non-essential assets to do that. A lot of people on the board and even in the audience are saying, well, this is something, oh, what, had this come out of, this was something that was going on for years. And you know what? It's hindsight. Hindsight, we often look back, oh, we should have done this, we should have done this. Very few people, myself, Mr. Giantino, who apparently just left, and Mr. Shudy, I know, were three people that came up year after year saying, you know what? These figures, they look really high for your estimated revenues, and we were told, oh, no, no, they'll come in. Every year, they came in short, came in short by anywhere from $300,000, $200,000, $300,000 on some years, which adds up very quickly. And you know what? It was meant to reduce, I understand the board's logic, it was meant to reduce the amount we were paying during hard times, but you know what? The more you put off paying something, the more you have to pay down the line, and that's what we're feeling now. So not only do I think we have to make this budget lower this year by means that are reasonable, that keep our services, but we also have to look in the future, because we can't afford to pay the piper again this steeply, because it's gonna kill this village. We have to make sure that not only is the budget this year reasonable, but we have to make a plan for in the future to make sure we don't push it to the next year saying, you know what? Oh, let's add $300,000 here so we can help relieve the residents. You know what? Pushing it down the road only makes the problem substantially worse, and I applaud this board to stop that practice now, not tomorrow, now, and make it so we don't push problems off to tomorrow, especially financial ones, because now everyone is here and has to pay a large sum of money for misappropriations over years of mismanagement. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patricia Sanford, I live at 10 Interstate Street. Prior to that, I grew up in Stonegate my whole life, except for three years, and I want to talk about those three years very briefly. I moved up to Orange County because I wanted to get away from the taxes. I moved to Warwick, which was one of the villages that went to the state and consolidated with the town. I closed on my house, they said, okay, what night do I put my garbage out? They said, well, it depends on who you hire. Who you hire? What do you mean, who you hire? I had to pay for my garbage to get picked up. When, when do I put on my recycling? You have to schlep it all the way across town, and you have to drop it off, nobody picks it up. Okay. Where's the town pool? There is no town pool. Is there summer camp? No, there's no summer camp. Like, what, where am I? Where did I move? That was my fault, because I didn't do my research, but I thought, I was naive, I thought everywhere was like the Village of Sufferin'. It's not. So I moved back. Where do I move? Earmont. Again, didn't do my research, because I just thought everywhere was like the Village of Sufferin'. It's not. Let me tell you about police responding time. My son had an anaphylactic allergic reaction to something. Three years old, gray, on the carpet in my living room, lifeless. I don't know if it was eight, nine, or 10 minutes before the police arrived, but they were the longest minutes of my life. And here, it probably would be less than a minute, and I'm not exaggerating. So you want to charge me 10%, 12%, 15%, I'm happy to pay it, because I've seen what, you get what you pay for. I think that the first thing we have to do is work together. And I think that, I'm gonna be very honest, the first meeting I attended a few months ago, I didn't know who was who, I didn't know who was what, but by the time I left, I knew it was very divided. You come here, and there's teams. When you're on social media, you can tell, there's teams, you can tell who's on which team. I'm on the Village of Sufferin's team, and we all need to be on the Village of Sufferin's team. And I have to say, Mr. Markounis, how do I get on your email list? Because I, uh, it's Rolando.
Rolando.
After my dog, my beautiful boy.
Sure.
Two L's, R-O-L-L-A-N-D-O.
Okay.
Because I have to say, you have some work to do to gain my trust back. I feel like at the meetings I've been to, there's been a lot of contradiction in things that you've said. And I feel like there's a resistance between some of the board members and the mayor. And it makes me, it saddens me, because I want everybody's best interest to be the village, and not whatever their agendas are besides that. So I want to be on your email list, I want to hear from you, and I just hope that everybody doesn't freak out by the increases and cuts, cuts, cuts. Just be careful what you wish for. That's it.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, we'll move on with the agenda.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, motion to close the public hearing, so I forgot what we were still in. Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, moving along in the agenda, Police Department Chief Osborne.
Get back to the board, I will be very brief, I have to go all night, and I, I just want to stress real quickly, you know, type is getting heated, there's a lot of issues going on, obviously, we're not, we get a lot of while in suffering, I, I notice people sit there, your families, your kids, see, walk on my dog, I see you, we're a tight community, and we need to continue to be that way. There'll obviously be some certain opinions, we always get, you know, maybe feel the same way as maybe somebody else, but we need to keep moving forward, we have a great village, we have great services. What we will do about for the police department, it needs to be done to make it work. I've been a lifelong resident, I've been a police officer 25 years, I've served as the chief, we're gonna make it work, we're gonna do what we need to do. Most of us are friends in here, we're gonna, either moments ahead, we are friends, we know each other, let's just keep moving forward. And the mayor and board, we've been working together, I know, so we'll continue to work on this, so I appreciate that. I just want to stress that, because obviously, our department, you know, came up a few times, and I just want to let you know, we're here to help you out, whatever we can do, that's just very simple. But I just have a few informational items, uh, this month we're focusing on, which we've been doing, I should say, we're gonna continue, our downtown safety, we're gonna focus our crosswalk enforcement. The reason we do that is we, um, we found, we raised complaints, they, they found complaints, they're justified. I know some senior citizens or young mothers with strollers, that every time they come to intersection, they start coming across the street, no one will stop. And it's a violation, after, you know, if you don't stop. So we've been setting up some operations, and we've been issuing minimum sentences, and we've noticed a difference that's slowed down a bit because we're continuously enforcing it. That's for the safety of everybody to do that. We've been going after distracted driving, cell phone driving, breaking up very well. We started a foot patrol today, had officers out to walk in today, we're gonna continue it, went very well. I was on the sidewalk today, notice there's a lot of people coming up, talking to us, we'll continue that. We've been very proactive on speeding and aggressive driving enforcement. We focused on Route 202 for the last month, multiple arrests, multiple sentences, several officers here tonight, after we'd let her involve in these operations, and we thank them, they've done an awesome job, and the residents are very appreciative of that. Thank you. Couple more quick things, street fair, we're gonna have a booth set up, some booth vehicles, I've been on there. Uh, May 9th, we are looking to work with the Mala X, workout and drugs event, I'll give you more information. We want to, uh, any lights can walk, I think we're gonna go from Connor Square, or the dare hockey, we can workshop drive, walk into the Ochs for a big barbecue event. I'll keep you informed, looks like it's gonna happen at this point. And one more thing, which, I know it's not the first major thing, but to the parents it is, because I was up there today, and I want to thank you guys, I respect, I spoke to Ed, church, we spoke about the square, and we go through crossing guard again. Ed, we went to Connor Square today, and we started having, departing authority, as you know, most of them have did this ban, we took over the enforcement part of the police department, it's working at excellent. Your agents are doing great under us, and we had them doing the crossing guard detail at Connor for the kids, because people have been up there, if they're not there, they gotta kind of see the three stop signs. So thank you guys, we worked on excellent, we've continued every morning. And, uh, that's it, and once again, I think most of you know, if I've been on up, you guys, a lot of you see me outside of work, most of my neighbors are here, friends in the neighborhood, but just even if, you know, you're down on me, and if you're living events, please, you're not a law guy, open to policy, people come down every day, you talk about issues, so, so thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, Department of Public Works, Charles Swinkie.
Good evening, uh, mayor and the board, just want to give you an update, um, the digester upgrade project is a, uh, New York State DC consent order project. This project is currently substantially complete, with punch list items remaining. Um, the scope, some of the scope of work, uh, includes, uh, evacuation of the digester and transportation of sludge, cleaning and recoding of the digester interior, replacement of the primary digester mixing system, repair of the primary digester cover, replacement of the biogas equipment, replacement of the primary and secondary digester heat exchangers and associate high water circulation pumps, uh, replacement of the, uh, digester slum, uh, sludge motor. Um, this project, um, has, um, two minor field modifications, uh, first one being the thermal cutoff added, uh, from the variable frequency drive to the sludge mixing pump motor. Uh, this is a, um, 20 horsepower explosion proof motor, which is very large, very heavy and very costly. Uh, the thermal cutoff, uh, prevents damage, um, to the motors such as overheating and failure. The other item is the, uh, the gas flare control panel relocated to a safe location on the, um, process building at a, um, height above the recorded flood, high flood level. Uh, this work includes, uh, new power and control conduit within the process building. Uh, requesting modification to the electrical, uh, portion of the digester upgrade project. This modification is in the amount of $5,659.23. The, uh, total cost of this project is $1,183,562.55.
Do I have a motion? Right, your modification.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
How he can't read everything when he's there, and he did.
Yeah, well, this is a contract modification, so he needs, we need to do that separately, it's by protocol.
Who made a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hagan. Mr. Morris? Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I'm just, all right, yes.
Uh, Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Okay. I have two application for payment request, requesting payment of application of payment number eight to Northeast Remco Construction in the amount of $27,530.05 for the wastewater treatment plant digester upgrade project. And I have, um, confirmed with Michael that the funds are available.
Do I have a mo, thank you, Mr. Byrne, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Requesting payment of application of payment number four to HVSLLC in the amount of $3,539.07 for the wastewater treatment plant digester upgrade project, the electrical portion.
Again, you have confirmed with?
Confirmed with Michael on the, uh, availability of the money.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Mr. Markounis, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
I'd like to, um, request a, uh, public hearing, um, during the May board meeting for the annual MS4 report.
Uh, that would be at, no, 7:50.
Public hearing for May 4th.
7:50, May 4th. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Markounis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay. Uh, I have one, uh, training request, uh, the village, uh, street sweeper is manufactured by Pelican. Uh, a Pel, a free Pelican sweeper service training course for operators and mechanics. Uh, he's being offered on April 29th, 2015. This course is located in Old Brook, New Jersey, requesting Mr. Vogel, Mr. Barrish, and Mr. Kronk to attend.
Do I have a motion?
Is there a cost?
No, it's free.
I'm sorry?
No cost?
Uh, no cost, no cost, it's free.
Motion.
The employees will be going on, on their scheduled work tour. Yes, that's correct, no overtime.
Do we need three people to go?
Well, this is, uh, we're, we're trying to get everyone trained on the sweeper, and these are the three remaining employees that haven't received training as of yet.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Byrne, do I have a second? Mr. Hagan, uh, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have the building departments, Eve Connolly would like to give a report.
Okay, this'll just be real quick, uh, just bring the board up to speed on what we built in, what we did last month. Uh, we issued 17 building permits, uh, we did 10 municipal searches, and performed 51 fire inspections for a total of $40,430. Uh, we also issued, uh, 15 violation notices, and issued 14 appearance tickets. And I'd also just like to mention, Mr. Giantino brought it up before, about the code enforcement officers and the building inspectors. We are part-time, and the code enforcement officers do work primarily evenings and weekends. The building inspectors work daytimes. Building inspectors can also perform the duties of the code enforcement officers. So in essence, you have coverage pretty much around the clock, and as such, being part-time, there are no benefits being paid. So you have full-time coverage with no benefits being paid. So it's, that's pretty much, to me, a win-win situation. But, you know, we, we do all kind of work together, and, you know, work with each other, and, you know, our office is there, anybody has any questions, uh, call us, come in, see us, valuable.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
Steve, I just want to thank you for responding at my request to some violations that were noticed in and around the hospital area. Now, if you'd like to elaborate a little bit on that, and what took place?
Sure.
In regards to the, to your response?
Sure, we investigated the complaint, went up and checked it, and rightfully so, there was, uh, quite a mess up there. So they were immediately posted in violation for several different items, and the manager there, Jay Thompson, was in to see me last Thursday, I believe, and he said he was working on getting a lot of the stuff cleaned up. I went up and checked it today, there are still a few items left there, uh, the mains, there's a couple of, still two trailers there and a couple other items, but he's, he's working diligently to get rid of it. So hopefully, he will get that done this week. There were a couple of other issues there with the, uh, handicap parking, no parking fire zone, stuff like that. And I gave him a little leeway on that because of the springtime, the cleanup, uh, you know, he'd worked on the parking signs, and the restructuring of the parking lot will take a little longer by the time they can get the, the, uh, parking lots cleaned and then restripes. I gave him a little leeway on that, but not on the, uh...
Great, and notice of violations were issued.
Oh, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
The next step, if they do not comply, will be an appearance ticket.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, next up, we have audience participation, if you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Bob Burbidge, and I'm a property owner at eleven Donahue Court off Ramapo Avenue in Suffolk. Uh, my, my comments and questions will be brief, but they relate to the proposed emergency access road from Orange Avenue to, uh, through Donahue Court to Ramapo Avenue. Well, myself and my fellow residents on Donahue Court, uh, certainly can see the value for emergency response in the West Ward, um, we, we have a lot of questions and we have a lot of concerns as to why Donahue Court, which is a very densely populated court with twelve homes and many young children, is the only and the most viable location for this, um, for this road to be, particularly when, in, in my opinion, Jersey Avenue is, is a much better option. Um, for those in the room that may not know, uh, this, this proposal is gonna require both myself and my neighbor to relinquish portions of our very small lots, of, of which, of course, the village will have to pay us fair market value. Uh, with the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant that Assemblywoman Jaffe got, I have a little bit of a hard time to understand how that's gonna cover not only the construction of this road, but also the compensation of the two property owners that have to relinquish parts of their very small lots. What I wanted to say tonight was that, um, this process, as far as I'm concerned, with notification to me, began back in October. Um, we did have an initial meeting with the mayor and several other village officials, after which we presented a list of questions and concerns, and again, I really am just asking for my questions and my concerns to be answered. We were promised a meeting in February, which has not happened, so none of our questions have been answered. I will say that I, I issued two written FOIA requests, one to the, one to New Jersey Transit, because I got several different stories that the railroad wanted this versus we wanted it.
Just give me one second. Ladies and gentlemen, we're really having a hard time hearing Mr. Burbidge, so if you could please keep it down a little bit, it's, it's very difficult to hear him.
So, with regard to the FOIA requests, okay, I have to say, New Jersey Transit wrote to me twice and had the courtesy to tell me, or ask me, for an extension to reply to my request. The only response I have gotten from the Village of Suffolk is that, from the, from the village clerk, that most of this is verbal. I have a very hard time to believe that a project of this magnitude doesn't have a piece of paper, or an email, or a communication, that everything is verbal. I issued the FOIA request on January fourth, and I asked this board, does this board have any intention of complying with the law and responding to my FOIA request, of which I have had no response? And when can I expect that response?
I apologize, because I, and I wish, I don't see the FOIA request, and that's maybe something I need to change, but I do have that documentation from New Jersey Transit.
Alright.
Um, and I'd be happy to get it to you, so does the police chief.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we're both, we both have it.
Hold on.
Okay.
Hang on, one, change of tape.
I'll, I'll contact your office for a time that I can come by and pick it up.
Yeah, please do. And as far, and in regards to meeting with you, I, I did, um, kinda update you a couple times to let you know that we have not received any approvals yet with the, with regards to the funding for the project. Uh, so therefore, we have not, um, done any work, because there's no funding to do any, any, um, exploratory work, or any, um, planning work, uh, until we know that the funding's in place. So, we really have no more information on the project than we did when we initially met, um, so, but as soon as that funding comes through and things start to move along again, I will be meeting with all of you.
Okay, and my expectation would be that there would be a public hearing prior to this?
Um, I don't know if we need a public hearing on the emergency crossing, but I s-
I mean, you are gonna be taking property.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I, on the, on the, on taking property, we would, but not-
If we go to eminent domain.
If we go to eminent domain, but we, that's not, that's the hopes that that won't happen. But certainly, I will be, um, you know, in touch with you, once we have the studies done and, and we know, um, exactly today why they still feel that that's the, the crossing that should be used, um, you will be included in all of that. I, I promised you that then, and I promised you that today.
Well, in, in, in helping me to understand some, the answers to some of those questions-
Absolutely.
I think that the, responding to the FOIA request from January will be helpful.
Yes.
I did not know that you have that documentation, and I'll be-
I do.
I will be happy to come and pick it up.
Absolutely, I'll have it ready for you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burbidge, I just said something real quick.
Sure.
We, there's a document that I have also, Mr. Burbidge, the one thing they, they didn't address was the actual location of, I know that I have it downstairs. The reason that they chose that location, because I happened to be involved in that, I wasn't directly, wasn't my decision where to go, but we brought him up to say, where's a spot we can cross, and I know the one spot that they, if they suggested, years ago, maybe it was at least three or four years ago, I guess, was that location, because of the width, they felt the width was, and it felt because of the height from the track, they felt as you went up the track, it would've been dropped off more, they were concerned they could not do it, really, I mean, economically and safety-wise. I just happened to be there for that time, I don't think that's addressed in the letter, but the rest of it is, I know that. But I just wanted to know, sort of making, look for something that's not there, that was not in writing, I was there with some other people, and that was the reason they chose that spot. So, I just figured, sort of making a chase around, so. Okay, no problem.
Good evening again, Roy Chudi, Monigan Drive, uh, I'd like to know, are there any contingency plans for this spring to clean up the riverbank that leads from Boulevard down to Donna Howlett Park because of all the debris that's been dumped over there?
Yeah, Roy, actually, I put that together last year, it was very, very poorly attended, however, I am going to try again this year with the hopes that there will be better attendance, um, you know, from the neighborhood. Um, I, I, I tend to think that I need to wait a, a little bit longer than I did last year, so the weather turns a little bit nicer, um, you know, for whatever reason, Mother Nature's hanging on to this cooler weather. But yes, as soon as we see that the weather has truly made its turn, I would like to, uh, to set that up again, and I hope that I, I could get your help in getting the residents out, it's, it's really-
I'd be glad to do what I can.
I appreciate it.
But there's a lot of, uh, heavy debris that's across, across the river, so, you know, I don't know how-
Unfortunately, you're not gonna believe this, and if Joe Hunt is here, he will confirm, we can't touch that.
So, then, the property owners, would they be, um, requested to remove it from their property that dumped it down?
No, we're not allowed. Rockland Drainage Agency will not let us go across that river to get the stuff on the other side. So, what I'm doing is, I wrote to them to ask them, if you're not gonna let us do it, and we're willing to do it-
Right.
Then we need you to come and do it, because now it's really becoming a problem with the flow of the river.
And it's very unsightly, if you, if you go by now, you'll, you'll see what I mean.
Yes.
And, and the second thing was, um, the Donna Howlett basketball courts have been destroyed, um, because basically, the equipment that was put there was a little inferior, to be truthful, um, so, um, hopefully, uh, so the kids could have something to play with, um, through a grant, I would hope that they could find, uh, money, 'cause I understand uh, how, how the fiscal constraints are right here and now with the village, so maybe through some grant money, again, uh, it could find a way to rebuild a part-
We do have some money in move of recreation that we're gonna be able to replace those with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chudi.
Okay, Patsy Rogers, Nineteen Mansfield Place, and this is my good news. Um, Mr. Marconis and I met with Alden Wolf a couple weeks ago, uh, he's the head of the Rockland County Legislature, and he has a transit initiative, uh, which he is using to promote economic development, and he wants to include Suffolk in this project. And so, um, earlier this week, we went up and we met with Jim Hall, who's the head of the Palisades Interstate Park Commission, and he has agreed that the Trail Conference will be able to expand the network of trails leading out of Suffolk. And that will mean that there will be more trails for people to come to, and we are hoping that they will come by New Jersey Transit from all of New York City, hike, and then come back and spend their dollars in downtown Suffolk. So, good news.
Mike, I just had a couple of questions, I'm still looking at this budget. Under code enforcement, we have no income. Uh, page fourteen. Last year, we had twenty-two thousand.
I think that was based on the fact that the year before, we didn't have any either, so...
And, and year-to-date, we don't have any? Well, you won't, you won't know that until you look. And the same thing with other public safety. We had sixty-five thousand last year, and we got twenty this year. I, I'm assuming we're not making those numbers.
Right, uh, that, um, yeah, the other public safety, I'm not quite sure what was anticipated when the twenty fifteen, fourteen, fifteen budget was adopted, but, um, the history of that account has been closer to twenty thousand-
Alright.
Historically, so, there must've been another forty-five thousand anticipated that never actually, um, came in.
Okay, don't go away, one more. Building permits, we're, we're saying seventy thousand, what are we basing the seventy thousand on? Because last year was two-hundred-and-thirty, I, I, I don't even wanna know what we brought in, I don't wanna get-
No, again, it's-
-into my stomach.
No, that, that again was the history of it, um, where we ran through the last several years of history, there certainly were a couple of years where we had some outliers, if you will, some, uh, large spikes, but for the most part, the average is between seventy and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Makes sense, thank you.
Michael Curley, um, this is on an issue I think that's gonna come up later in reference to the VFW, I think, uh, is it, is it fair to say that we're, I mean, we prior had voted to buy the VFW, is it fair to say tonight that we're gonna vote it down not to buy it? Is that, is that a fair testament? I mean, Mr. Morris, at, at the workshop, you said we voted it down the other night, and-
Right.
We didn't have the vote.
Yes.
Is it fair to say that we're gonna vote that down, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Okay, can you, I, I would ask you to do one thing, okay? Every hour in this country, a veteran commits suicide, so during this meeting here, while we were here, about three veterans killed themselves while we were doing this meeting, on average, okay? Um, I, I've come up with an idea where, uh, after I talked the last time, the, the Karate Foundation approached me, it was actually Pete Karate, okay? And what he's, uh, considering doing and willing to do, if, if the village would hold off and maybe try to figure something out and talk about it, he'd be willing to buy the VFW and give the veterans Tennessee rights, lifetime Tennessee rights on the bottom, okay? But, uh, 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 as you know, I'm sure that, the, the permission to do this was sent up to the state of New York to see if they could sell it first, I don't think that answer has come back yet, okay? But what I wouldn't wanna do is, is hurt that application, hurt that chance. I would ask you to just look into this, it doesn't hurt us one bit, it's not in the budget, it's not costing us, okay? But you might save a veteran's life who hears some bad news, okay? So, I'd ask you to just hold off on it with this plan I have in mind, okay? I will actively work on it, okay? And, and, it doesn't cost us anything, it's not gonna hurt anyone here, and, and as I say, it's, it's a drastic thing that's going on, especially with the new veterans that are coming over from all these wars, and I'd ask you just to consider it based on what I, my representation I made you, thank you.
Okay, let us move on, uh, village clerk.
We have a lot of approving to do, Mayor, approval of the minutes of the board meeting of September the eighth.
Okay, this is just for-
The three of you.
The three of us, right?
The three of us, yeah. Frank?
Um, yes.
You're gonna be doing a lot of talking.
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion carried, approval of the minutes of special board meeting of September twenty-third?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of October fourteenth?
I was not present. I was not present at that meeting.
Okay, so that one, we can't vote on. Uh, approval of the regular board meeting of November tenth?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, now we can vote.
Okay, now everybody's in. Uh, we will not be voting on G, the approval of the minutes of the special board meeting of March twentieth, although they are completed, they were not distributed to the board, so we will hold off, uh, they will be distributed to you tomorrow, and you'll be able to vote on them at the next meeting. Um, approval of the minutes of the organizational meeting of December first?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are you hearing eight batteries going?
My hearing's going.
December first.
Less people talking out there to themselves.
Approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of December first, two thousand fourteen?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, okay.
I have permission to advertise for a concession stand, I would like to have them brought back, uh, April the twenty-third at ten AM.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. Now, we have tables and chairs request. Shamrock Rock Hotel wants ten tables and chairs. Craft House wants six tables and ten, thirty chairs. B-B Ball Meatballs wants three tables and six chairs, they've all been approved.
Okay, tables and chairs for the Shamrock, do I have a motion?
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure.
When we give these, uh, permits to, to have the tables and chairs, does anybody, do we send code enforcement out?
Yes, that's, they've all been approved.
The code enforcement goes out and measures-
That's what Virginia just said, they've all been approved.
They've all been inspected.
Yes, they measure the distance on the sidewalks and tell you how many tables they can have.
What's the term of the approval?
One year, one year.
One year.
This is, Shamrock is a renewal.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Craft House is new.
Craft House is a new, a new application. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. B-Balls Meatballs, three tables and six chairs, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, we have one other thing. Suffolk Farmers Market wants to extend their hours to close at four PM, just for one day, on May the ninth.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Department?
Nothing to report since the last three hours.
Thank you, sir. Um, okay, trustees, VFW.
Okay, uh, I, I'd like to go ahead with the, just a little background information, uh, I spoke to several commercial real estate brokers, uh, and we should have an offer to purchase the VFW building. We should have an offer to purchase, uh, the VFW building before the end of the week by a private developer, who's looking to make, uh, uh, three or four apartments out by a private developer who's looking to make, uh, uh, three or four apartments out of the building was his guesstimate. But, uh, he should be sending an offer in, uh, like I say, before the end of this week. Uh, so I think we should go ahead and not pursue the sale. Obviously, there's an interest for private companies to take it over. And, uh, once they do, again, it becomes irritable for the village, and you have people buying and selling, uh, the, the goods and wares of the village. So, uh, I make a motion to go ahead and cancel the sale of the VFW building. As far as the, the veterans go, I spoke to Ed with the American Legion, and I suggested that though they have a hard time understanding with each other, uh, they were all on the same side, uh, and that, uh, maybe some accommodations could be made for them to be absorbed into the American Legion and a place put aside for their meetings and whatever other, uh, issues that may come up for them. But, uh, I'd like to make the motion that we discontinue pursuing it, especially given this financial status of the village. 150,000 is not, it's not only the 150,000, it's the thousands of dollars that follow the purchase. Once you purchase the building, you have to heat it, you have to air condition it, you have to maintain it, to clean sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not just 150,000 dollars. Uh, if we were better off financially, maybe it's an easier decision. But right now, I'd go ahead and, uh, cancel the sale of the VFW building.
Okay, do I have a second? No second? Okay, I have no second, so there is no, uh, no motion on-
I would, I would just like to, to discuss it a little bit, if that's, if that's okay?
I need a second then. Okay, so we'll move on.
Uh, one more thing, uh, we do have time set aside for executive session, right, Mayor?
Uh, no.
We had issues at the workshop meeting and-
To discuss?
Uh, some issues for executive session.
Yeah, I need to know what topic it is. You can't just go into executive session without a reason.
It was a personnel reason.
Personnel, that's fine. Okay. Um, okay, on to me. I would like to report to the village that, um, some good news. Uh, most of you know, we had some filming here in the village. CBS came in to film a pilot for, uh, a TV series that will be airing on CBS called For Justice. Um, the village was, uh, able to, um, after expenses put into our account, $63,529.37.
Is it still there?
I'm sorry?
Is it still there?
I don't think it's there anymore, but it was there, I think, for about 25 minutes or so. But it, it's good news. It, it was, um, you know, I, I really expressed to them that, um, in coming into this village, you know, it, we really would need, um, some substantial numbers from them. They came through, uh, they were wonderful to work with, uh, they caused little to no disturbance to the village. They were very good to the business owners, anyone who was put out. Um, it was an overall excellent experience. Um, they have already sent some others to us, um, some major production, um, shows that are already airing, and some that are movies that are to be filmed. So hopefully, if we could get like one of these every other week, would be all right. But that was the good, my good news. Um, I also wanted to all, let you all know that as I promised Mr. Chute, uh, a letter went out to Mr. St. Lawrence, Supervisor St. Lawrence, uh, with regards to the quarry project, um, as I promised. Uh, I did send it registered return receipt. I have not, to this date, received a response. I also, um, CC'd the board members. No response yet. Okay, so, just to let you know, we did go. Okay. And someone did sign for it. I have the card here. We're good. Okay, uh, the next thing is, and I think Jonathan is here. Is Jonathan still here? There you are. Hi, Jonathan. Um, Jonathan Turco is here, and Jonathan has, um, very graciously, um, offered to donate his services of Turco Landscaping to maintain, uh, Point Park for us, uh, to do the grass cutting, uh, to keep the shrubbery trimmed back. Um, and he would like to do that as, uh, his way of giving back to the village. Uh, he has his business here in Suffolk, um, and he's very thankful for, um, you know, having the business here, and it's his way of giving back to the village. Jonathan, did you want to say a few words? You're good? Okay. So, um, I would need a motion to accept Jonathan's very, uh, yeah, Jonathan, you'd have to just, um, did you give us the certificate of insurance yet?
Uh, no.
Okay, so, yeah, we would require that you give us a certificate of insurance. If you can get that to Virginia, that would be wonderful. And then you would, um, get in touch with Mr. Sewicki upon the approval tonight, um, if it is approved. Um, and he will be the one that you will keep in contact with, with logistics. Okay?
Will that include any, any signage for the business that indicates what they've donated and a little free advertise, not free, but advertising for the company? Is that-
Maybe we can talk about that in the future, but I'm-
Yeah, I think it would be nice if you put something there like, um, you know, services or however you want to word it, donated by Turco Landscaping. Yeah, that would be nice. It's like an adopt a park program that you're starting, and I like it.
You should get credit for it, absolutely.
It's great. You started, you're going to start something big here.
We won't charge you that much for the free advertising, don't worry.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much. It's really a great help. Um, okay, so do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Okay, the last item that I have is to appoint the deputy mayor. Um, it, it is, uh, there is only one trustee left as all the other trustees have declined to take the position. Um, by law, I must appoint a deputy mayor. So to fulfill my obligation to the law, I would like to appoint Ed McUnus as deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, I am honored.
I'm glad. I can't wait. Really looking forward to working with you.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Mayor, before you close out.
Oh, Frank would like to say something. I'm very sorry, I'm done.
Uh, before we, before we adjourn, I just want to let everybody that's left, the other 10 percent, 90 percent left, but we all spoke to Mr. Janito about the budget after we got a tentative copy. How long ago was that? Two weeks ago? We've been to every department, and we made suggestions to Mr. Janito. Am I right? Thank you. So who said we didn't make suggestions and we didn't do anything about the budget is full of crap? Thank you.
Thank you.
The second thing I want to say, the second thing I want to say is, here's the Home on the Bayou letter. You gave it to them, how about giving us a copy?
Oh, they should have been put in your boxes.
Well, they were.
They weren't emailed?
No, they weren't.
The clerk's office.
No.
Laura?
I'd like a copy.
Did you get a copy?
Did you?
They were sent out, and the one with me to go into each one of the boxes.
Well, you like to involve the whole board. Where's our copy?
I apologize, I left it to the clerk's office.
That's, no, not, well, we will, sorry.
We will adjourn the meeting, um, as a matter of fact, we'll do that now. We're going to go into executive session.
Excuse me, just, I just have a couple of points, if you don't mind, Mayor.
More, yes, go.
Sure. Just to clarify to the people that are left, as Mr. Hayden did state, um, I would really like to go on record to say that I have met numerous times, I don't know how many times, it has to be at least five times with Chief Clerk. I have met with Detective Mallon, the head of the Policeman's Union. We discussed different ideas on reducing the budget. I've met with Charles Sewicki, along with Mr. Hayden. I've met with Mr. Janito numerous times for hours, exchanged emails, calls on the phone. I met with Kathy Mills from the Recreation Department. This is all directly related to this budget crisis that we're in, that we've explored and I have spoken to these department heads. Please, if anyone disagrees with me, you can stand up and tell me. I've also met with Steve Conley and spoke about different ideas about building permits, fire fees, multiple family dwelling, uh, cost for applications. I've met with Terry Rice and the mayor in regards to the budget, in regards to revenue.
No, I don't have that.
I'm just going through my list. I discussed labor contracts with Lance Klein, our labor attorney, on cost-saving measures. I attended the court to see what type of revenue that we were bringing in from our fines. As you can see, this is a very complex budget and problem that we are in. I would recommend, not, not, uh, not a recommendation on the budget, but a recommendation on working together and forming a committee, a public committee, including the board and the mayor, where we can meet openly in a public forum and not violate the sunshine rule, and come to these decisions and, and brainstorm and try to figure out how we can get through this, this crisis. So I am proposing, if it's possible, Terry, maybe you can guide us on it, if that's a possibility, that we can form some type of a committee that is able to meet in public and work through this budget together.
Well, the board can meet as a whole and, and go over the budget. You don't need to set up a separate committee, but-
Terry, you want it, please?
The board can meet as a whole, it obviously is subject to the open meetings law, but certainly, the entire board can go over the budget and meet with department heads as, as happened in the past.
So we can meet, but we, we have to have a, a meeting, a public meeting. It has to be open to the public.
Correct. And, and, and even if you created an ad hoc body-
Right.
-that would be subject to the open meetings law as well.
Correct.
Yeah, but I don't think we have enough time, Ed, because those names would have to be presented to the board and approved by the board.
Just offering suggestions and trying to-
But make something good for next year.
I, I discussed this, you know, I went through the department heads that I discussed it with. I also discussed it with Matt Byrne, Frank Hayden, the mayor. I don't want you to think that we're, the board collectively or myself, is not doing their job. We are working on this budget hours on end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.-
Mayor, if I might, um-
Sure.
I'm making a motion to adjourn at the end, if you don't mind.
Oh, you know what? We're go, we're not going to do executive session tonight. We're going to do a special meeting because it's so late already. I think everybody's had enough for the night. So I just spoke to Mr. Morris. He has no problem with us meeting at a special meeting at another time. So if you'd like to make the motion, go right ahead.
Just, I, two things, very, very, very briefly, that may get lost in the shuffle tonight. There are two items that this board was unanimous on, and a lot we are unanimous on. Watch the votes, most of them are unanimous on. But two very important items, the quarry, um, representation to the town of Ramapo, that we are together as a board in support of the town of Ramapo, who owns the property, um, going through with their promise, uh, to look into the siphoning system. And there, as you'll see the letter, I don't know if it's posted online or not, but maybe it should be, might not be a bad idea. Um, and we all came together to do that. And the five of us also came together on requesting the comptroller to come in and take a look at the budget. Those are not insignificant items. So the idea that we, we don't work together, I, I reject that. Are there items where we disagree? Clearly. Personalities sometimes get in the way, and I understand that. But we all here, I don't question anyone's motives on this board. I don't question the mayor's, I don't question anybody else's. We all want what's best for our village, the village I was born and raised in, many of us were also. Um, we have, all have a vested interest in making sure the right thing happens. We may have different approaches, um, but we're all here for the right reasons, and I would hate to see us questioning each other's motives. I don't think that's necessary, and I don't think it's right. We're all here for the right reasons. No person on this board is, is, is here for anything other than the right reasons. So that's my two cents.
Matt, just so that I can let you know, I just gave to Virginia the letter, and she's going to put it online.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
As we adjourn tonight, um, I've done this on a couple of other occasions when, um, when there's been a loss in the community that is not insignificant. When we lose anyone in the community, of course, it matters, but, um, a gentleman who passed away a little over a week ago dedicated his, um, much of his adult life to raising his family, um, just over the border in Suffolk Park, but had a great impact upon the village of Suffolk. Uh, his involvement in Sacred Heart Church, his involvement in the Knights of Columbus, his law firm right here in the village of Suffolk, representing families across the village. A good, honest, and quiet man who made his points, not by pointing fingers and yelling, but by being a, just a good and decent man. And I'd like to adjourn, uh, tonight's meeting in honor of Robert Ellsworth, uh, who passed away just again, about a week ago, a little better than a week ago, who left his mark on this village and is someone that we shouldn't forget. So I, I move to close the meeting in his honor.
And I will second it. A good man, wonderful, wonderful part of Suffolk. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?